The people here work hard and people in Chicago also lead with their hearts.
I have DC.
And I have well.
There's a humbleness, I think. When things aren't going well, I think they also reach out and they help their neighbors. Story after story, I've seen people come together to help the people around them. And I think that's what makes a city this size still so special because it is a community.
The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call. The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
Good morning. The quorum roll call is now open. Please mark yourselves present. If anyone needs assistance, please just raise your hand. We're coming to you, Alderman Hall. Erin? Erin? I'm sorry? Okay, I'm gonna call on those alderpersons who have not marked themselves present yet. Alderman Robinson? Alderperson Robinson? Present? He would like to be marked present. Alderman Hall? Present? Like to be marked present. Alderman Beal? Alderman Coleman? Alderman? Alderman Moore? Would you like? Alderman Moore, please mark present. Alderman Curtis? Alderman Mosley? Please mark Alderman Mosley, present. Alderman Wagasback? Please mark Alderman Wagasback, present. I believe we've marked everyone in the chambers. Okay? You can close. They haven't asked yet. Vasquez and Gardner? Do you want to call on Alderman Vasquez? Alderman Vasquez, was that you?
Yeah.
Alderman Vasquez would like to be marked present. He is attending remotely. Please mark Alderman Vasquez, present. And then we can close the vote. Okay, please close the vote. Close the vote, please.
There are 46 members present. We have a quorum. Alderman Vasquez has requested to attend the meeting by remote means under Rule 59 for medical reasons. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Alderman Vasquez is allowed to attend this meeting remotely only if he agrees to keep those tattoos out of the photos, please. You got it. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered today by Pastor Kinson, Lamb of Park Community Church, Bridgeport.
Let's pray together. Father God, we thank you this morning because as your Bible states, your mercies are new every morning. The fact that we have breath, life, and purpose to our work today is a testament of your mercy that you pour out each and every day. We come together in prayer this morning, recognizing that as many important decisions will be made in these chairs, they are done so under your control and sovereignty over all that happens. I pray for all our elected leaders and especially for my ward alderwoman Nicole Lee and for the Honorable Mayor Johnson, that you would give them incredible wisdom and discernment and courage to lead our city to a place of flourishing and restoration. Would you anoint them with your presence so that they would be an extension of your grace and mercy and authority to our beautiful city of Chicago? And Father, as we look across our city and all the complicated issues before us, help our leaders to see what you see. Fill their hearts with compassion and empathy for all the people in our city, from Rogers Park to Irving Park to Lincoln Park to South Loop to Chinatown to Bridgeport to Pilsen to Little Village to Bronsville to Gage Park to Roseland to Beverly. Lord, help them to weep for those who weep and to rejoice over the success of others. We would ask that where there are areas of division in our city, would you bring unity? Where there is hurt, you would bring healing. Where there is evil, you would bring justice. Where there is unrest, you would bring peace. Where there is shame, you would bring honor. Where there is poverty, you would show your providence. Where there is weakness, you would bring strength. And where there is hatred, you would bring about your love, which is most clearly seen on the cross which you gave through your one and only Son, Jesus Christ, to die for us. Help our elected leaders to serve like our Savior with all humility and grace. May you also fill their hearts with encouragement, as it can be very easy to be overwhelmed with the opinions and critical feedback of others. Help them to rest in knowing that you have called them to a season like this to serve your purposes. So Father, I pray Micah 6:8 over our leaders and what you require of them. May they do justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Before we move forward with public comments, Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a point of order, Rule 59 requires a motion to accept Alderman Vasquez's request for remote. So I'd like to offer that motion for the vote that was taken.
Could you speak a little louder? We didn't hear you. There you go.
My apologies, Mr. President. Rule 59 requires a motion to accept the request for remote access.
So you're saying the rules require us to accept the request before we vote on it?
To make a motion to accept.
So there has to be a motion before we vote on it? Are you making a motion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that motion.
And accepting the vote that was cast previously.
Thank you. So all those in favor of the motion, barring that tattoos are not exposed for Alderman Vasquez to join us remotely, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. Now we will accept public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker today is Aaron Turner.
Good morning, good morning. Morning, Mayor Johnson, and greetings to the esteemed members of the City Council of Chicago. My name is Aaron Turner. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Illinois Realtors. I'm here representing the Chicago Association of Realtors and its over 17,000 members. Today, I'm asking for your support for passing ordinance 2023-1588, which passed out of Housing and Real Estate Committee last week. The ordinance funds the Building Neighborhoods and Affordable Housing Purchase Price Assistance Program, known as BNAH, to the tune of $10 million. We wholeheartedly support this program, which helps bring the many benefits of homeownership to low-income families. In fact, among other celebrations this month of June, it's Homeownership Month. What better way to pass it? What better way than passing this ordinance? So thank you for your time. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, for your comments. Our next speaker today is George Blakemore.
This is a sad day here in the city of Chicago with the black community. Can you hear me now and watch my minutes too? The clock will say three minutes is up, but they rig things down here. Oh, yes, they do. 99% of these people sitting here are Democrats. 99% of you blacks over here are Democrats. It seem like the Democrats are playing a game on you. A game on you. That's right. A damn game on you. When they bring these illegals in, are they naffy and black like me? They could get a lot of black immigrants coming in here from Africa, from Haiti, from Brazil. They got millions of blacks captured and slaves and broke to the Americas. Something is wrong here. It's time for you all to get off this ship. This Democratic ship. Well, Trump is a racist. Biden is too. The system is racist. It's in the fabric of this city. It's time for you to make a change. Get off of this damn ship. It's not carrying you to Zion. It's carrying you to hell. Can't you see what's going on here with these illegal immigrants and our so-called black officials vote against our interest? It's time for... We not gonna tell them to go. Some of y'all need to go. Y'all mind is messed up. What alphabet would you say their mind is messed up with? An L. Oh, Mr. Blakemore, you using this language? Yes, I am. Something is wrong here. Something is evil here. Something is corrupt here. Something is sinful here. Get off of this machine. Create your own. You're doing the same thing over and over again, and you get nothing. These people get more than you. They get food stamps, housing, and every education and everything. And everything. Everything. Man, everything. That's right. Tell them. Thank you, man. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore, for your comments. Our next speaker is Myron Byrd.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. May I have everyone's undivided attention, please? I want to say good morning to the members of the City Council, the newly-elected officials, and the mayor, Brandon Johnson. My name is Myron Byrd, and I am with the Chicago Coalition for the Homeless and the Bring Chicago Home campaign. I'm here today because we have a problem in the city of Chicago. Not only do we have gun violence problem, a mental health problem, and other problems that's plaguing in our fair city, that is basically, right now, we have a serious homeless problem in the city of Chicago. Okay? This same problem was ignored by the previous administration. Okay? And now, we want this administration to get a little bit of history of what Bring Chicago Home is about. In the city today, it's 65,611 people that are homeless in the city of Chicago today. So not only, we have another 8,000 to 15,000-plus of migrants. And I did say 15,000-plus. So that's why we're... This Bring Chicago Home campaign is proposing a one-time real estate transfer tax of 1.9% to properties over a million. That will help generate an estimated $160 million a year. And that would generate for services like housing, mental health, gun violence, domestic violence, physical health, and other services needed to help those who are homeless, who are about to be homeless, or will be homeless. So we, as Bring Chicago Home, would like for the mayor and the city council to bring this measure up on the council floor so we can all bring Chicago home. Thank you. I yield my best of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd, for your comments. Our next speaker is Victor Murray.
Hello. Good morning. I just want to speak on an issue that I had brought a couple of months ago to the City Council floor. And it is obviously an issue that is not something that people want to deal with because in order to do the right thing, you have to do what is not politically correct in order to do the right thing concerning the inefficiencies in the Cook County court system. And much of that begins right here with the landlord-tenant ordinance and in correcting a lot of those issues. Some of that begins here, then also our Cook County Commissioners need to do something about that as well. What I'm speaking about is indirectly, it affects the or exacerbates the migrant-immigrant issue because of the inefficiencies in the court. There's no way that evictions or forcible detainers have to take nine to 12 months in order to be adjudicated in the court. It is absolutely insane. So what it does, it puts property owners at an extreme disadvantage, and we cannot rent at reasonable rates because of the fact that these extreme disadvantages that it puts property owners. It makes no sense. I know that the improvements can be made because the city collects all of its fees, taxes, and everything else with the utmost of efficiency. So therefore, all of the efficiency that is put into collecting fees, taxes, and everything else can be put into actually correcting the problems that exist. And first thing we have to do is to recognize and admit that there is a problem within that system. It does not mean that it's against anyone in particular because it's going to be something that's going to cause a huge cost increase if these things continue to be dealt with the same way that they are. It makes no sense that we're dragging on like turtles and walking through fast-setting concrete. It makes no sense that this is not being addressed publicly and not being addressed quickly because the migrant issue is directly tied to this issue. So we need to be dealt with it much more efficiently than we're doing it. So please, let us earn our six- and seven-figure salaries. Thank you in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, for your comments. Our next speaker today is R.L. Brooks.
How everybody doing? My name is R.L. Brooks, and I have a few things to say. There's a problem with crime. Now, we all are responsible for our kids. Now, the first thing should have been done years and years ago. These kids should have been taught the law. They should not have to go to jail to learn the law. Because most of them, like myself, went to jail, studied real hard. Now I know the law. I'm a lot more better. I'm not saying it's gonna change everybody, but to not put law books and real strong law programs into these schools is bogus. You cannot tell a kid he wrong when you not even trying to teach him what's right. But you put all this racist stuff in the school, don't make no difference what color it is. But you teach that, all your history, that's fine with me. But you won't teach them the law. Because the law have something in common today with everybody. We all got to know the law. We all got to learn and obey the law. But you put these history books in there, but you won't put no law books in there. I believe that need to change because why? I went to prison for five ounce of reefer. I did 21 years. That's what it started for. That's what it started for. I got thrown in solitary confinement all because I got stabbed up. They put me in solitary confinement because somebody else got hurt after that. I stayed in solitary confinement for 20 years. Straight, 20 years straight. I was tortured by guards, not inmates. I'm trying to tell you something. This whole system is corrupted. You just can't blame the kids. You just can't blame them. The whole system corrupted, all up in Washington, D.C. Congress, I wrote all up, from Hillary Clinton all the way to Senator Derby. They all know me. I try to do what's right because I ain't afraid of nothing. Y'all was up in them penitentiary drug in them MMA, sir. Then they come out crazy as they was in there. And so when you lay here and create an environment like that where you drugging these guys up instead of educating them, teaching them how to be doctors, teaching them how to embalm folks since they want to be killed, at least they'll have a job. So my point is clear. There's a lot of good... They can be lawyers, they can be a whole lot of things. Then maybe you can consider paroling them. You're not doing anything but letting these guys out. They ain't GD, okay? You got a G. But my point is this here, it just don't add up to the competition. In the world, I believe you all need to really consider some of the things that I'm saying and try because I'm set up by a judge. I got all these papers. They need to be read up because...
Mr. Brooks? Mr. Brooks, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Oscar Ortiz.
Sure is, Rick. The struggle for fair wage has been going on since the beginning of time. We went from slavery and continued to be slavery, but this is a new form of slavery. While the struggle has been going on, it's, uh, in 1838, back in the United... Okay, let me start this all over again because, uh, in the struggle, the struggle for fair wage has been going on since... Uh, that's okay, bro. You are. You taking my time, bro. In 1983, the mayor is a good man. We're lucky to have the mayor here. Let's hear it for the leader, Mayor Johnson. Give him a chance. All right, so it started in England. And then 30 years later, in the 1860s, the unions became the form in the United States. Fast forward to the 1900s now. That is why we have 40-hour work weeks, overtime pay, holidays off, wage increases, and medical health insurance. We are fighting the same fight that we fought back then in order to survive for today's socioeconomic... in order to climb today's socioeconomic ladder. We will find, we will continue to demand that there is one fair wage. I'm talking in favor of Mr. Alderman. I rise to support Alderman Rosa's ordinance about livable wage. The National Restaurant Association is not paying... is not paying all of the workers the minimum wage due to a past agreement. The National Restaurant Association, which I want to call NRA to make it short, but knows that the inflation, that the inflation we just recently had was horribly hard. Yet they want to keep this outdated agreement, which was forged with the past mayor and a long-gone city council. The agreement singled out a group of workers in the restaurant industry to be paid sub-minimal wage. We are here today to demand that the NRA, National Restaurant Association, it sits down and rewrite this agreement that was drafted at a time when the economic conditions were different. The law is irrelevant by today's economic standards. The national average for these types of worker, they're getting paid $7.80. But, but, this is Chicago. And the soul of Chicago will rise up and find a way that is more perfect for all parties involved. In this, in the meantime, we are here to tell the National Restaurant Association that they have to sit down with the unions and renegotiate the law that was written a long time ago and prove to be short-sighted. This is a demand and not an ask, corporate America. A livable wage would allow, would allow a family to chase the American dream. There are families here who do earn a livable wage, and they have the opportunities to achieve the American dream. Let's want fair wage.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz, for your comments. Our next speaker is Roosevelt Daniel.
Good morning to everybody. I'm Roosevelt Daniel. And I'm glad to be here to speak before the city council because there are some issues that need to be addressed that going on. But first of all, I want to say to the mayor, I worked hard for you to be re-elected. And I expect you to work hard for the peoples of the city of Chicago. If everybody work together, we can get things done the way it should be. But I'm going to go as far as now changing. I'm going to say that Alderman Mitt, you gave out my name, my address to someone in the ward, and your ward literally right by me because I didn't agree with one of the meetings that you said you didn't do. And I got the paper here to prove that you put it in effect. So, this gentleman, his name is George Lopez. He has a repair shop. And you said in this list that it wouldn't be anymore. You put it in effect 2017. And so, he came down to my house the day after the meeting that I complained to you about it. And he comes to my garage, walked inside of my garage with his camera, took pictures of my car, took pictures in my garage. I asked him, I said, "What are you doing?" He said, "You've been calling 311 on my business." I haven't called 311. I didn't even know the man no more than I've seen him. But now, he didn't know me. He never came to the meeting. And you gave it out because he said, "Alderman Mitt told me that you complained it." So, I'm going to say to Alderman Mitt, "Why would you, is it a law for you to give out people's name and address so they can come to your place of business, I mean, your home, and take pictures of your garage and take pictures of you?" Now, I don't think the law permit that. If I'm wrong, I would like for the city council to tell me I'm wrong. So, I want this to be taken care of. And I think that you're going above the law, giving out this information. And to me, I believe that this man is being paying you off. And right away, like I say, this happened on a Thursday of your meeting. Friday, this man approached me in my garage. Now, is that right? And you... I go there, I come to your meeting, put my name on the thing. So now, why would this man, he don't know me. He never came to the meeting. I've been coming to your meeting. But I have, and me, this is a problem. If I'm wrong, like I say, somebody tell me I'm wrong. Now, do the law permit all of them who's supposed to be representing the peoples to give out people's name and address so somebody else can come? You know, I was frightened because this man could have killed me right there in my garage. You know, he just came up there from nowhere. Now, I was frightened. So, I would hope the city council take a look into this as well as the mayor and tell me, like I say, if I'm wrong, let me know. But I don't believe the law permit that. So, why would you do that to peoples? I don't understand you. You know, I know you, you, they, you are being paid off by those people because I got the paper here right now to prove you put that in effect. But you denied and said to me you didn't do it. So, I, I, I...
Mr. Daniel, thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Daniel, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Denise Goring.
My name is Dr. Denise Goring. Born and raised here in Chicago. Grew up in Robert Taylor Homes. I now live in downtown Chicago. I was very instrumental in Mayor Johnson's campaign. I drive around to Chicag... drive around Chicago because I want to get involved. So, as I was driving around, um, on the west side, I noticed all these migrant immigrants at the police station. And I got a concern. I have family members that are police, so I understand. People wanting to help, Chicagoans wanting to help. But my main concern is, Chicagoans, let's take care of Chicago people first, then throw out the lifeline to help others. So, we have $50 million going to migrant immigrants. What do we have for the Chicagoans here in Chicago that are homeless, that are veterans, that have mental health? And I know our mayor is driving to take care of some of these issues. We all need to help and think about what we're doing, what we're bringing in, what we're imposing on the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goring, for your comments. Our next speaker is Melvin Bailey.
Hey, good morning, City Council. It's been a while since I spoke to you guys. I'd like to say good morning. I'd like to say thank you to all the Aldermen who supported us to go on the ground to build affordable and market-rate homes. We got two structures going up in Ed Smith Ward. We have two structures going up right now in Walter Burnett's Ward. And we're doing under-job training to get the guns out their hands. One night, Walter called me and said, "Man, what is these guys? They selling drugs." There were so many guys on the corner. They were so happy to see their guys working. And I told them, "No, they just happy to see other folks working in their neighborhood." And the police officer came up to me and said, "Man, I'm glad you hired that man right there because he was a problem in our community." Some of the guys upstairs right now. So, what I'm telling you guys now, I want y'all to come back. Thank, thank you, Alderman Pet Dow, for coming back next week to see our development up, seeing the structure, see the quality of work we putting into it for the under-job training to get the guns out these kids' hands. Y'all know my speech, I'd never changed, for the past three administrations. But thank God, now we in the ground to show you guys that we need to do more. And we need to speed up the process of getting these lots into our hands so we can do more. I invite all the Ald... I'm going to call your cell phones. I'm going to have you come out anyway. I'm inviting you. I'm going to invite you all to come out and look. But then I want to tap on this. We got in, um, my organization, I'm going to say this real quickly because it's very disrespectful for the community. We were selected for an Invest Southwest deal on Lake and Kidzie. We did not have one community meeting, not one. Oh, uh, uh, Maurice Cox said, "Oh, we don't need to have a community meeting." I was like, "Why, we don't need to inform the community?" So, I went and told the police department, 11th district. I told Ms. May, everybody up the block. And they was like, "So, call me, Melvin, uh, uh, we made a decision. We gave the, we gave the project to, uh, McMichael's Group." I said, "How?" They come in at $40 million. I came in at $26 million. And we was going to hire from the community. But now, I, I'm in, I'm shortlisted for another Invest Southwest deal on Madison and Hamlin. We'd have had 20 community meetings, 20. What is the difference? Why are we passing projects that significant to them and not significant to our community? That's something that we need to look at. We need to look at it. But I really want y'all to come back and see the development that we're doing and see the young man that's being trained, on-the-job trained. I'd like to say thank you to Will Edwards, Department of Housing, for helping us get that money so we can train these young men on the site. And that's what we call under-job training. And if we want to get these guns out their hand, we got to replace it with a drill or a hammer. Trust me. Trust me. That's the only way that's going to happen. And the young man that I'm hiring, "Oh, I'm coming, Ms. Tate, I'm coming in your ward." "Oh, oh, more? Oh, come on now." You want me to start calling all your names? "I'm coming in your ward to do some affordable house, market-rate homes as well." You know, we want to put a mixture in there because we want to make sure that we hire from that neighborhood. And that's the only way we're going to change lives is we hire from the community. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, for your comments. Our final speaker today is Jessica Jackson.
Hello. Um, I want to say real fast to the black community of this town, in the name, in the words of Malcolm X, we've been hoodwinked, run amok, bamboozled by sitting here thinking that these black politicians are helping us. They are not. They have us believing that the major problem in our community is crime. The only thing we got to be concerned about is crime. Policing, policing, more policing. When the reality is, all of us don't go to jail. All of us ain't on probation and parole. But what do all of us end up being somewhere sometime? In civil court. Civil court. And civil court is where they're getting us. That's where they're giving us the economic harm in processes like probate. Mayor Johnson, I need you to listen. I need your undivided attention so that you can hear what the soul of Chicago is like. That probate division. It's not just the immigrants that's coming in and bull guarding our communities. That probate division with the public administration office is illegally taking our properties that bequeath to us in probate process. I'm sitting here with a four-wheel from my mother. My mother died and didn't owe nobody a dime. She didn't owe nobody a dime. Her building been paid for since I was 15 years old. And you can get up in probate in a, in a, in a process that you all say that even if a person doesn't have debt or will, that they still, because they got real estate, they still have to go through probate. Only to get in probate and those crooked probate judges. The crooked probate judges. Do I need to name the names so you going to get on it? Because if you don't get on it, I'm coming back and I'm naming names. These Aldermen? Yeah. Who is my Alderman over there in South Shore? Is it Greg Mitchell? Is it Yansey? Who's my commissioner? Is it Stan Moore? Is it Bill Laurie? Who do you take the issues to? Is it the city? Is it the county? They guys are spread up, straight up in a litigation maze that's not intended for you to get justice.
Ms. Jackson, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you. This concludes our public comments period. Resolutions, we have three resolutions today. A resolution honoring Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. A resolution commemorating June as Pride Month. And a resolution honoring Juneteenth, National Independence Day. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
I move to suspend the rules to allow us to, um, to hear our resolutions today.
Thank you. Hearing no objections. So ordered, in the interest of time today, we will forego reading the resolutions and go straight to the remarks from City Council. Our first resolution honors Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Do you want to close? Do you want to close or go first? It's amazing how unified this city has become because I believe Adelta stood up and applauded as well. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I first want to give acknowledgements to you and say thank you for allowing us to be here and to do something to support the AKAs across the city of Chicago who have worked so hard in terms of their give-back. So today, thank you. I want to thank my partner in crime, Alderman Stephanie D. Coleman, who is a sister and a soror. But in the City Council, we are not just wonderful AKAs, but we are Alderman-Pac-Dow Delta. We are Alderman Gregory Mitchell, Q's in the house. We are Alderman Walter Burnett, Sigma. Oh, he got on the Sigma commas. Look at her. Oh. So, it is truly wonderful to have my sisters and my sororas in the room with me today. What you all have done as an organization has transformed my life. Many of the, my she-roses are sitting in the box. They are women who have been a part of transforming my life. And I'm going to look at Soror Loanne, who has that right. She got a switch and she will whip her sister up. But she is also the person I look to when I want to know anything about AKA. She is everything, AKA. And I've gone a little out of order, but I do want to acknowledge Sonia Bowen, who is the 30th Central Regional Director. Loanne Honesty, who has been a soror. I think she was a soror from the day of birth. 21st Central Regional Director, former International Treasurer and Central Regional Historian. Now, today, I really want to emphasize that we are not just pretty girls. We are smart girls. We are educated girls. And, but our, our theme is, we give back. Everything that an AKA does from the time we go to a meeting to the next meeting is figuring out what else we going to do, how else we're going to work, how, how to take the blessings that we've been given as an organization and make them work. And it's all about our give-back. And I can't, I want to say thank you to the women who are at the top because they give their life... because they give their life. They got families now, y'all. They got families and husbands and children, but they give their life to this organization and step away from some of their duties in their homes to come and look at a broader case of telling everybody about what we do in the sisterhood. So today, I'm more grateful than I've ever been. I love all my soror. You all have been the wonderful example. I mean, I'm in a chapter. They don't make me work hard. They let me do me. They let me be the crazy alderman. So I wanna thank my chapter and my chapter leaders in that chapter for giving me grace and allowing me to be a part of that group and that organization while they carry me and lift my heavy butt up. You know, I got a lot of work in here. So they carrying me. But I'm grateful because they do it in love. My soror Carolyn back there and my bachelors, where my bachelors at? Soror King is my, thank you. They all work so hard as an organization of women. And today, again, this is about acknowledging all your commitment, all your dedication. And if we had AKA Day every day, it wouldn't be enough. So thank you for your service. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your give back. Thank you for being amazing, AKA women. And I love you, and it ain't nothing you could do about it. Hey, soror, thank you.
Thank you. That's for you, Alderwoman. That's for you. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support and excited support for this resolution. You may be asking yourself, why would be standing up to acknowledge you? But I, I know some history too. And I first and foremost wanna thank you for this one right here, Alderwoman Harris, who's a mentor of mine on this council. I first learned about Black Greek organizations when I went to college. And I went to a place where I literally had never been around, and pardon me in the room, so many white people in my life. I went to Indiana University back in the 90s, where the minority population at that school was less than 10% total. And it was a, it was a strange experience, having grown up in Chicago, having gone to public school and having most of my friends look like most of the people in this room. And I found myself in a position where I needed a place. And a group of other young women leaders and I, we started our own Asian sorority at IU. And we modeled ourselves, thank you, Kappa Gamma Delta. But we modeled ourselves not off of the traditional Greek system, but on the Black Greek system because we love the, the model of service and all that you were committed to in terms of giving back to the community. And that takes me back to now, which is, I wanna thank each and every one of you for your commitment to community. We are here as representatives of, of our constituencies, but we don't do any of this alone. So I recognize that each and every one of you plays more than probably seven roles in each of your communities. Because when you show up like this, when you make yourself part of an organization like the AKAs, it's a lifetime commitment, and that's a commitment to service and to sisterhood. So I thank you for all that you're doing in this city. And I look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome the first, finest, and best sorority to City Hall. I can't thank Chairman Harris, who's like another mother who disciplines me in love and surely gives me protocol of this council. Don't wear that, okay? You're out of, out of line. But in love, to our former colleague, our retired colleague, Alderman Leslie Harrison, who is celebrating 43 years of being a member of this organization. I know Representative Kim Duble Clay was here. And I have to shout out our Delta Sister, Alderman Chairman Pat Dow. When we are all sisters, we just wear different colors. And then the mother of the Fourth War is here, who adopted me as her daughter. Mama, we love you. Alderman Robinson's mother is here from Theta Omega. And the protocol has been met in recognizing our past regional directors, women's shoulders we all stand on. In 1980, the Action Committee, the Connections Committee, was founded at the 80th Boulay, I believe. And the mission was to engage in social, political, and civic involvement. And what this organization has been doing for the last 100-plus years has been advocating for higher quality education, maternal health and infant mortality, suicide prevention, public safety, and environmental justice. So as Chairman Harris said, we aren't just pretty in our 20 pearls. We are workers across the nation as we're advocating in this very city to support every mission that we have has been what Mayor Brandon Johnson has been intentional about in serving this great city of Chicago. I have to shout out the mothership, the mothership, 46 years in this organization. A few of my line sisters, Pastor Krista Austin, Alex Vane, Mika, Nicole Burnett for International Headquarters, Natasha Scott, Mika Matthews, Merkletta, and Janice Kerr. And I got to recognize my sisters over from the West Side, Barbara Dear, and the Tau Omega, Tau Gamma Omega, where you all at? From the West, West, West Side. And President Bobby Steele and Lady Vera Davis. May I just have a station identification? Can our Silver Soror, can you all wave your hands? These soror have been serving all mankind for 25 years. And do we have any Golden Soror in the house? These women have been members of this organization for 50 years. So we are looking at decades and decades of just history. And where are the Pearl Soror? Do we have a pearl? And we have a pearl 75, 65 years. 65 years of service. And our International President's mother, ooh, we thank God for you soror. Thank you, thank you for being with us. O Alpha Kappa Alpha, dear Alpha Kappa Alpha, hearts that are loyal and hearts that are true. By merit and culture, we strive and we do things that are worthwhile. And we, we help each other. God bless your soror, and we love you.
Okay, um. I've been around, I've been around black people for a very long time. And that was pretty special. I mean, even, that was absolutely amazing. So thank you, Alderwoman Coleman, for that incredible presentation. So I've, I've learned a lot today. Silver, gold, and pearls, right? So congratulations. All right. So if there's anyone else wish to speak, I dare you not speak behind that, but I will, I will. Okay, well, good luck. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chairman Harris, I would like to let this body know that Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated is also represented in this body.
Apology accepted by the Chair. Thank you.
Kappa Alpha Psi Sorority Incorporated. It's a little joke. That's, that's next month. That's next month, ladies. With all seriousness, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was founded on a mission of five basic tenets. Mr. President, like you, my mother, who is here today with us, Mary E. Robinson, cultivated and encouraged high scholastic and ethical standards in education and service to all mankind, teaching in Chicago public schools for 34 years. 25, 25 years, Mr. President, in Inglewood, USA. It is because of that service that I am a member of this distinguished body today. I would also like to acknowledge my aunt, who also spent about 36 years in Chicago public schools, who was an Ivy beyond the wall, Marsha Blair. And my cousin, who was with me today, and my big sister, Marla Hohenkirk. And my very capable replacement in the historic House of Representatives, who is also a member of AKA, Representative Kim Duble Clay. Ladies, thank you for your service to Chicago. Thank you for your service to the state of Illinois and the United States of America. God bless you, and thank you again.
The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was very intentional this morning when I decided to don my crimson and cream. And that's because I wanted everyone to know that I stand in full support of this resolution as a member of Delta Sigma Theta Inc. And wish my sisters in Alpha Kappa Alpha, congratulations on your day at Chicago City Council and also it is AKA Day in the city of Chicago. Service to our communities is the hallmark of our sisterhood. And I recognize and respect the deep synergy I share with my colleagues like Chairman Michelle Harris and Chairman Stephanie Coleman, and my own state Senator Matty Hunter, and my own state rep, Kim Duble Clay, and my sister over there, Mary Robinson, who's son sits next to me today. And I want to just say that although we rock different colors, our commitment to social justice is timeless and priceless. And I wanna congratulate every woman here representing pink and green today on your commitment to the city of Chicago and to the betterment of our communities. Thank you all.
Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, the light, light, light's not working. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I too wanted to stand up for this particular resolution because growing up in the city of Chicago, going to schools, it was impossible not to run into an educator who was not a member of a Greek letter organization and the ones that I knew in the schools that, that I attended were members of Alpha Kappa Alpha. And those women then really put a mark on a lot of us as young people because of the nurturing, because of the respect that they put upon us and we gave to them. And so I just wanted to rise and just say thank you for the work that you all have done in the shaping of our community. While we have members of, of all of the Divine Nine organizations and you all's commitment to our community, I do think, though, it is important for us to recognize each and every one of you, primarily the women of Alpha Kappa Alpha. The last time I, I said something about a sorority, I got myself in a little bit of trouble. But nonetheless, I, I do think that we have to make sure that we understand our roots, where we come from, and, and the work that you all have done to make our communities great, to continue in the strides that you're doing. And congratulations, and God bless you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wish to speak to this resolution? Seeing no hands, then I will do my best to bring this into some level of paration here. I also stand with the body here, the City Council, to speak in support of this resolution. I'm honored to acknowledge and thank Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority on AKA Day, Chicago City Council, Chicago City Council. Since its founding in 1908, in 1908, your mission to promote unity, friendship, and service to all mankind has shaped and enhanced the fabric of our city. We are proud to have Alderwoman Michelle Harris and Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman as extraordinary women, AKA, and leaders in their respective wards. Across the state, as you all know, our Lieutenant Governor, State Senator, Lieutenant Governor Juliana Stratten, our State Senator Matty Hunter, Cook County Board President Tony Preckwinkle also exemplify the excellence that exudes through the AKA. Thank you for your great leadership. AKA has a rich history of fostering women leaders and making a difference throughout communities. From the first AKA president who got the sorority involved in the women's suffrage movement, fighting for voting rights, to the current-day president, President Anthony Reed, who continues to fight for equality. Your sorority has a proud legacy of being at the forefront of social justice movements while promoting service and sisterhood along the way. As you advocate for access to high-quality education, access to better maternal health care, mental health care, environmental justice, and more, I want you to know that we share priorities for our great city. And I stand ready to work with you, all of you. Thank you for choosing Chicago, of course, as your headquarters for Alpha Kappa Alpha. And thank you for making the city of Chicago the greatest city in the world. Congratulations. We're gonna pass these individually? Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell. May I get a motion for the passage of the resolution?
Mr. President, I move passes, uh, yeah, I move passes and on this.
You got it. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you. Our next resolution commemorates June as Pride Month. Are there any aldermen or older persons wish to speak to this resolution? Chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I rise to support this resolution, recognizing Pride Month, recognizing the contributions of the LGBTQI-plus community here in the city of Chicago. As the resolution makes note, in 2023 alone, state and local legislatures have already introduced over 600 hateful laws targeting LGBTQIA-plus communities. Laws that seek to set back the clock on civil rights. Laws that seek to force communities back into the closet, to criminalize love, to ban books that have LGBTQI-plus characters. Here in the city of Chicago, we pride ourselves in having the first-ever LGBTQIA-plus Hall of Fame. We pride ourselves in having one of the first-ever organizations that fought for the gay and lesbian community. We pride ourselves in being welcoming, in being loving, in being an accepting place. And so this Pride Month, I've provided to all of you, my colleagues, and to you, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for putting it on, this beautiful Union Made Button that has the Progress Pride Flag, that represents not just the LGBTQI-plus community, but also uplifts the Black and Brown members of our LGBTQI-plus community. Individuals like Frankie Knuckles, who will be, be recognizing later on today when we landmark the warehouse. Yeah. And so I'm asking my colleagues, if you haven't already, please consider putting on this pin that makes it clear that you are an ally to the LGBTQI-plus community. That in the face of right-wing hate, you will stand with our sisters and brothers and our siblings and say, "We accept you, we love you, we are going to protect you." And here in the city of Chicago, you do not have to live your life in fear. You can live your life openly and with pride for who you love and for who you are. So thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for supporting this resolution and bringing this forward, and of course, for wearing this beautiful Union Made Button.
Thank you, Alderman Rosa. The Chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution proudly. I don't know that I can match any of the eloquent or enthusiastic or energetic speeches of our previous resolution. But I can say that I am proud to be an out-elected official. I'm proud to be a member of Chicago City Council. And when I was first elected, I don't think I realized what the impact would be on the community that I serve or even the broader community in the city of Chicago on having an openly gay, Black woman in elected office. And over my first term, I had so many beautiful opportunities to represent our community, from middle school newspapers who wanted to interview me and ask me if I'd sponsor their LGBTQA club, right? To college students who saw in my representation themselves and opportunities to, to show up as they are. I know that personally, I'm fortunate to have a family and a, and a community that's always been supportive of me being who I am. And that is not a privilege that many of us have. And as Alderman Ramirez-Rosa mentioned, we're watching every day as people try and attack our community and take away our rights. As a pragmatist, it, to me, it just seems like a huge waste of time. We know we're gonna win. Right? We know we're gonna win. We know the achievements of LGBTQI members throughout this country have added to our greatness, have added to our culture, and have added to the aspirations that we continue to strive for. We are not a perfect place, even in Chicago. Today, with the AKAs, Juneteenth and LGBTQ Pride Month, it feels really close to perfect, you guys, I'm just saying. Very close, but we're not. And I appreciate every member in the box and every member of our community, every future out-elected leader, parent, teacher, who continues to strive for representation to help our city continue to be more perfect, our state better, our country better. And I thank you all, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the 44th Ward Community, I am so proud to stand here in support of this resolution. I represent the ward that elected the first LGBT member of the City Council. Thank you. 20 years ago, 20 years ago, when there was just one of us in this room, in this seat. And now, now there are nine. Out, proud, elected officials, not representing the North Lakefront alone, no offense to Timmy and I, but representing every corner of this city, the northwest side, the southwest side, the south side, and beyond. And so I want the far north side. And I want us to really take note of that. A lot of people ask about what I can do for the LGBT community. You know, I have Halsted, I've got the center, I have Howard Brown. And I say that my job is really to make sure that every community has those affirming, accepting services that mine does. And that we need to have those services south and west and northwest. And we've seen that start to spread. And that's so important that we, as a city, find those services in every corner of our neighborhoods. Pride for me is a, is a time to take stock and think about the last year, our successes and our failures. And it's been a rough year. I think a lot of my colleagues will talk about that. Nationally, it's frightening. It's frightening to see what other states are doing. And it's also been tough for our local institutions. Many great ones that are represented by my friends in the box today that have really had some ups and downs. But just like our amazing community, those institutions are bouncing back, and they're resilient and will continue to serve us for many, many years to come. So I'm hopeful about where we are here in Chicago as we receive migrants seeking affirming services more and more to Illinois, reproductive services, gender-affirming services, culturally competent health care. And I'm happy that we have a place here that we can support them. I know I will see many of you on Sunday. We're having a little parade. If you have not signed up, you are all invited to march with me and the other members of the caucus and really see, you know, to come together to celebrate, to celebrate each and every person in this city for who they are, who they love, and what they can contribute. So thank you all for this opportunity and for this amazing city that gave me a platform to come out and live my true self. And I promise to work hard to give back to all the communities here. So thank you and happy pride.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes the K is not silent, Knudsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, everyone who's here today. I stand in strong support for the resolution, but also excitement. You know, one of our esteemed journalists might be here, wrote an article a couple months ago saying that Chicago now has the gayest city council in American history. So my, my challenge to our journalist friends, let's do some digging. I think we might have the most LGBTQI-plus council in the history of the universe. Let's, let's expand it. But it's really a special thing. We all, a, a, a lot of us members of the LGBTQ Caucus got together a few weeks ago and broke bread and talked about our intersectionality, some things that we can get done for the community in the fight going forward against hate speech, but also for our trans brothers and sisters. And that's something that I know the leaders in the box will hold us to. And I thank you all so much for your work on these issues. I love being gay. I think it makes me so much better at this job. I think I get to do this job because of all the leaders and trailblazers that came before us. And we get to do it in a certain way. I love being gay because it makes me look at different communities' issues with a more dynamic, unique perspective. I feel that years in the closet taught me compassion towards any community that needs to be uplifted. And that makes all of us on the LGBTQ Caucus and all members of council stronger. So I thank everyone for celebrating this, this month in the city. Come to the parade. I'll, I'll give a shout-out. The parade starts in Miss Angela Clay's ward. Makes it way down through Mr. Bennett Lawson's ward and ends in my ward. Everyone is welcome. Make sure that this is a parade for everyone. And we'll be excited to see you there. So thank you all.
Just as a reminder, purchase as many items as possible, we need the revenue. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mana Happenworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so happy to see you. I am the first queer woman of color to represent the 48th Ward. And while I'm happy to see so many faces there, including Brave Space Alliance and Chicago Therapy Collective, small businesses like Rattleback and Early to Bed, and also those who are running for office. From my heart, I'm so glad to see you, but I'm also very sad to not see some of us who should be here today. It should not be a crime to exist. And that's why I'm so proud to be a part of Chicago's LGBTQ+ Caucus to fight for those who cannot be here today. Because when we do that, we all do better. Thank you, Chicago.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes older person Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank every voter across the city of Chicago who increased the LGBTQ Caucus from seven to nine, making us one-fifth of this city council. It wasn't just the LGBTQ community that believed in our ability to lead and transform the city of Chicago. It's every ally across the city of Chicago that believed in our ability to lead and create a more just world. And so thank you for everyone who allowed nine of us to sit in a council of 50. Also want to echo some of the sentiments of my colleagues. Chicago is a city who is paving the way for most of the country, showing that we can be a city that loves everybody and respects everybody and treats every fellow human being with dignity and respect. But we also still do live in a world in which many of us, when making travel arrangements, have to consider where we're going and if we are safe and if the way we dress and who we choose to love will put our lives in danger. And so there's much work to be done here in the city of Chicago as we're trying to ensure that we have culturally congruent and gender-affirming care in all of our hospitals and clinics, that we respect LGBTQ young people in our schools and allow them to truly live and love without judgment. There's still work to do. But I feel more confident about that work because who I am in council with, the voters that chose to put us in office. And I'm also extremely proud to represent a ward that raises and waves the pride flag as high as we do the Puerto Rican one. I am proud to represent a ward that crowns transgender women as the queen of our parade. You see, respecting the LGBTQ community does not just to have, does not have to happen just in Boys Town. We could do it in every ward across the city of Chicago, and that's what we should be achieving and striving for. And so I feel lucky to be here, to be an openly masculine-presenting lesbian representing the 26th Ward. But to also continue being a champion for my community because it makes a difference. Can't tell you how many schools I've visited in which young LGBTQ young people finally feel like they're represented in my community, where they can be out and comfortable, that they will also be treated with dignity and respect because their elected representative is treated with dignity and respect in the 26th Ward. And so I look forward to the work. But I also know that we are not all free and safe until our Black transgender sister is free and safe. And so we have work to do.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we work hard in trying to make our city more welcoming. I think in my own career, I could speak to welcoming of returning citizens, veterans even, immigrant communities. But I am particularly moved by my colleagues to continue on the fight to make sure our city is the most welcoming city as well of our LGBTQ-plus brothers and sisters. Speaking to my colleagues and to the public that are heterosexual, I do want to speak to some of my history and some of my own ignorance as a young person, growing up on the southwest side of Chicago, and some of the masculine tendencies that I felt that I had to live up to that weren't really living up to God's real call of love and justice. And I thank God that I've had brothers and sisters in my life who have shown me the way and educated me on what being an ally is to the LGBTQ-plus community. And I hope and pray that I continue on that path of discovery of myself, but of discovery of others as well, who might not be exactly like me. Because that's the city I want to live in, where when I'm not exactly like another person, I still love them, embrace them, and treat them as a brother or sister. To me, that's the city I want to live in. I want to live in a city that one-fifth or more of our city council is LGBTQ-plus. I want to live in a city, a state, and a region where our business owners are diverse. I want to live in a space where our young people who are questioning feel safe and they feel that we are there for them. So I acknowledge past wrongs. I apologize for past wrongs. But I am very proud to stand, to have stand, to continue to stand with, to stand- to stand with, to stand with into the future our LGBTQ-plus brothers and sisters because that's the Chicago that I want to see, and inclusive of Chicago where we love each other, we're there for each other, and we create safe spaces for each other. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes the fourth-best dressed city council member today, Alderman Laspada. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'm competing with the 26th ward over there. Hey, I'm really proud to stand in recognition of this resolution as with Alderman Rodriguez, straight cisgendered man serving on this council, but I was given this button, this beautiful union-made button, as was pointed out, and the question then becomes, do I have the right to wear this button? Because ally is a big, important word that we can't just water down in the city of Chicago. Because I know that tolerance does not equal allyship. I cannot claim to love people who I simply tolerate in the world, particularly when those who hate, nine of our colleagues in this room, who hate the folks in this box, who would destroy your ability to be free and healthy and safe and yourselves in the world, they are not satisfied with this status quo. Like, their work is about destroying your safety. And so, I hope that this allyship leads to and equates to solidarity and concrete steps that we can take as a council through the legislative actions that we take, through our support for campaigns like Hire Trans Now. What are we doing to earn the right to wear this button? And so, I hope that you all continue to hold us accountable, that our colleagues here hold us accountable. I believe what Alderwoman hadn't said, that the victory is inevitable, that your power and your passion is so great that the victory is inevitable. But how much does it enrich our lives as your allies to be a part of that victory with you, to take on that privilege of being in the fight with you? So, thank you so much for this resolution. Thank you for the privilege that is allyship.
Thank you, Alderman. Before we recognize our final speakers on this resolution, the chair would like to recognize the former Alderman of the 17th ward, Latasha Thomas is here, ladies and gentlemen. Are you also AKA? Oh, no. All right, sorry about that. No second applause. No second applause. Thank you one more time, you are the former Alderman of the 17th ward, Latasha Thomas. And so, with that, the chair recognizes 33rd ward Alderperson Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. President. And I brought my tattoos because you can't see Andres, so I wanted to make sure that we're represented. I feel really moved after hearing everything that has been said in this chamber today. I am a Puerto Rican Latina woman, and it is not always a welcoming space for queer people to be out, to say, this is me, this is who I am. And it can be a very scary space, and I know that that is the case for a lot of community of color. So, saying that out loud and letting ourselves be seen is important to create space for everyone. Here in the city of Chicago, I am very proud of the work that has been done, and it makes me think a lot about the idea of sanctuary that we have been cultivating in this city and how it expands because it is intersectional. Because in order to be able to create sanctuary, we have to create protection. We passed the bodily autonomy sanctuary ordinance at a moment when Roe versus Wade was reversed, but we knew that it was important to protect gender-affirming care because that is also bodily autonomy. Because we have to be able to protect people and their decisions about their bodies in order to be a sanctuary. And we are going to continue to do that. Jesse, I love you so much, and thank you so much for your words. Before I finish, I wanted to honor briefly the memory of a former student that I had the pleasure to teach at Pedro Albeizu Campos High School. She was a Black trans girl. Her name was Coco. She was my student. She was also Jesse's student. She was somebody that we love deeply and dearly and that we desperately try to protect. But this society is not a welcoming place for Black trans women and Black trans girls, yet Coco, we love you. And in the name of Coco, we are going to continue to fight to make sure that this is a welcoming space, that this is a real sanctuary for everybody, especially for the most vulnerable people in our society. I celebrate you all. I celebrate us. I celebrate this council and the city of Chicago for creating space for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Mr. President, thank you yesterday for supporting a great organization in the 4th ward, Brave Space Alliance. As we celebrated, its new CEO, Shannon Lynn Parker, who was here today. Also, I want to give a big shout out to Antonio King, the LGBTQ community liaison to the great city of Chicago and the Department of Public Health. Antonio, thank you for your great work. Mr. President, it's great because I get to thank my mother twice today. I want to thank my mother and the first person I came out to, my sister cousin, Marla Blair, who was here today. Thank you both for loving me and supporting me. I also want to thank Chairwoman Dow, Chairwoman Harris, and the lovely ladies behind me for allowing me to make history as the first Black-out member of the Illinois House of And the first Black-out male, Maria, to serve in this body. Mr. Mayor, some people might ask, why is this important? It's important because our youth struggle to be themselves. High rates of homelessness, high rates of HIV. But today is a great day because our community can see themselves in all of us, and they can dream big, Mr. Mayor, and they can be out and proud and make history. Mr. President, I look forward to working alongside of you to make sure that this community stands by its Black trans brothers and sisters who murders are still unsolved in our city, that our budget also reflects this great community, Mr. Mayor. It needs resources and housing and healthcare. So, today is a great day, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you standing by our community, but we certainly have more work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other members of this body that wish to speak to this resolution? Yes, okay. So, the chair will recognize Alderman Andre Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am proudly here associated with this resolution, having regret coming out there in person to be there with the folks of us, but I want to make sure to thank all those who taught us really meaningful, what we think about our sexuality and the origins of pride and historical rights in all of our places, and seeing how my people experience so much and just wanting to be who they are, loving who they are, and I want to acknowledge that the amount of representation shown to some of us who are not always the most holy. It's something that means a lot because it's allowed us to live in a better, deeper understanding of family and what love means. So, I'm very grateful to everyone in my life who's helping grow the word, so we're a nation that probably don't know it, should probably never collectively, to siblings like our sister, this mother who's along with us, knowing that our Black trans women are the most marginalized in the country, that's why the most in need of our community. So, I know there's some work that we need to do, and I appreciate if I can be around and live the time there, you know, my family members, your children, they're comfortable, and if they love, they have positive meaning, showing that I'm a part of that amount of race. So, I know that there are challenges and there are attacks in other parts of the country and the world, but I want to make sure that people here in Chicago and everywhere in the globe, that Chicago fully stands proud of our citizens, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're now speaking to this, that we're investing, that we're working on a change of laws, that we're each Chicagoan, we're using the best employer of LGBTQ community, there are non-binary citizens up, and that we think about things like that, using few visits, to try to identify scared, and then you're willing to be working first, and to see what you've got, to make sure that folks are just welcome, but they are capable, and we are very much to be a lot to lead with. And so, I want to thank you all, and thank you to the rest of the United States.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
I too stand in solidarity of celebrating this month for my LGBTQ brothers and sisters, especially, I can't wait to join you this Sunday on the north side over in the 44th ward, but specifically to Antonio, to Precious, to Alexis, to Fabiana, to Sarah, to Paul, and to Zach, and everyone in this. Thank you for being leaders and advocates as the chair of the Black Caucus, and two of our members are out and proud, the first African-Americans to be out and proud even in year 2023. Lamont gave a special shout out, but to Shannon Parker, the work that you have done in the Inglewood community. I want to publicly thank you for what you have done and the fact that you stepped out on faith, and now you are the chief executive officer. I cannot be more prouder of you as a friend, but as a fan also, because I just get, I'm in awe of the work that you've done, how you do it with style and grace. And what I love about Chicago is we're just a beautiful melting pot of Black, White, Gay, Stray, Christian, Kojic, whatever you are, we've got it in Chicago because we're all God's children, right? And we want the same quality education, quality healthcare, and we want equity across all. So, thank you, Mr. President, for recognizing our leaders, our brothers and sisters of this caucus, and happy Pride Month.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Thank you. I'm gonna have to work on that spin move when I talk. That's pretty impressive, Alderwoman Coleman. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning still to the members of the Chicago City Council. I too rise in support of this resolution for a whole host of reasons. First and foremost, my husband would not allow me to sit down and be quiet this Pride Month because he would get me when I got home, as every good spouse will do. But I have stood in this chamber for eight years and have recognized pride every single year. And it's one of those things where, when you're new, this is all about the celebration, the happiness, the joyous occasion, and as you get older, you realize just how much work there is to do for whatever community we're celebrating, even if it is your own. And I know, in seeing the depth and breadth of the diversity of this room, of the LGBTQ+ members, you know, we went from being just the gay and lesbian caucus eight years ago to now having four new letters added to that caucus name and a plus sign to boot. But there are still many things that we have to address in the city of Chicago when it relates to our community. And I'm so inspired by all of the new members from all across this city, from wards that weren't necessarily viewed as, you know, the gay ward or from the gay neighborhoods, but are here because this representation, this diversity, gives us the chance to respond to the issues that, as my colleague from the 4th ward just referenced, to issues that are impacting not only our community, the LGBTQ-plus community on the north side, but in every side. To have the first Black, gay, openly gay Alderman on the south side is a blessing to all of us on the south side, having been the only one south of North Avenue for nearly a decade. But this also allows us to address the issues of every person who identifies or is questioning or is concerned in our community, who may be a part of our community or knows someone who's going to be a part of that community. Because there are too many issues, Mr. President, that we talk about, that we congratulate ourselves on when it comes to addressing LGBTQ-plus issues that we still are missing the mark on. We have seen HIV and AIDS numbers still continue to go opposite of where we want them to, which is to zero. We've spent millions, and I do mean millions, on housing programs in neighborhoods to help address those who are living with AIDS or HIV, whether it's transitional, temporary, or permanent, one of which, Chicago House is coming to my own ward in the West Inglewood community. We again spend millions on preventative prophylaxis, otherwise known as PrEP, which I believe has allowed us to become more comfortable and allowed youth to become more comfortable with the idea of having unprotected sex because they believe that it is a safeguard for them against STDs and communicable diseases. These are issues that are not new to the LGBT community or any community for that matter, but we have seen where our eye has been taken off the ball. We have seen where even something as simple and as basic as getting free condoms into the community for men and women has stalled under the Department of Public Health. Our delegate partners are not reaching the people that they need to reach to help keep them safe, to keep them educated, to help us create a truly healthy and safe environment for the next generation of individuals who may be here or may be there. That is what we need to also celebrate and remember this month as we talk about what it means to focus on pride. We have to aspire to have the pride to ensure that we are safeguarding the future gay, lesbian, transgender, intersexual, bisexual, and any other sexual plus that will eventually be a part of the fabric of this great city. So, Mr. President, we celebrate, we march, we party, we wear feathers with our friends. But we also must remember that there's work to be done and that we have to commit ourselves to doing the work that goes beyond just the celebration, the work that needs to reach every community throughout the city of Chicago. Because thankfully, gone are the days where a little kid from the southwest side had to travel all the way up to the north side, not just to go hang out in a bar, but to have to get an HIV test, where you had to do the swab and then try to get up there somehow to find out if you had gotten anything from the night, from the week before. from the night before, from the week before. Those days are behind us, and we can never go back. And the only way we can ensure we don't go back is by making sure every department, every delegate agency realizes and understands that all of what we are wanting to offer in connection and with respect to the LGBT community must be in every community, everywhere, because thankfully, Mr. President, so are we. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other members of this body that wish to speak to this resolution? Good, seeing no other hands. I also stand with this body to speak in favor of this resolution. Chicago is a city that embraces inclusion, freedom, and love, so we rightfully celebrate and commemorate Pride Month across our great city. We do that every single year in June. This is our opportunity to honor the contributions and history of our LGBTQ plus community and continue to advocate for their rights and freedoms. We are joined today by some amazing Chicagoans who are standing up for the LGBTQ plus community every single day. And it's incredible honor to oversee this body as the gayest body in the history of Chicago. I'm sorry, the universe. I want to acknowledge the LGBTQ plus Advisory Council members who serve as liaisons between the mayor's office and the LGBTQ plus community throughout our city, making sure their wants and needs are reflected when it comes to making decisions. So I want to make sure that we acknowledge Elia Arnold and Anna Deshaun. Thank you for your work. We also are joined by Antonio Keen. It's already been recognized. Of course, we all know Precious Brady Davis. And then last night, we had an incredible time with the new CEO from Brave Space Alliance, Shannon Parker. Thank you. I will say, though, Shannon Parker has been in this role for fifty days, fifty-two days. Um, that's longer than I've been mayor, and her organization has been far more gracious than some people in this city. So hopefully, people will be nicer to me, um, in the days to come. But congratulations on your work. We are also joined by members from the Chicago Therapy Collective, who are working with the city to conduct an assessment of our hiring practices and accommodations for the trans community through the Hire Trans Now pledge. That's Executive Director Layden, Board President Martinez, Parker Haynes, and Fabiana Malarie. Did I say those names right? And finally, we are joined by business leaders who have taken the Hire Trans Now pledge and are a incredible example for the private sector by committing itself to hiring and accommodating trans folks in the workplace. So we have Ciara Desoc from Early to Bed. I hope I said the name right. Paul, say it again. Disac, there you go. And then we have Paul Rufino, um, from Rattleback Records, and Zach Ingo from Galet, Galet? Did I say that right? Galit. I'm getting better at this. And thank you for your service at this very critical time. You know, anti-trans legislation that attacks the LGBTQ plus community is sweeping across the nation, and of course, it's especially targeting trans children. We need to keep making sure that Chicago remains a city where all people are welcome. Whether you are gay, lesbian, trans, non-binary, bisexual, or queer, you will always have a home here in Chicago. This month and every month, we will stand up for your rights and protections and continue to improve the quality of life for every single person in the city of Chicago. And it's truly my honor to recognize the resolution that the City Council, and of course, let's make sure that we have a great time this week as we celebrate Pride Month, spend a whole lot of money so we can raise revenue, to do all the work that Alderman Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage in the omnibus.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Our next and final resolution commemorates, oh, sorry, our final resolution honors Juneteenth National Independence Day. Are there any older people? The chair recognizes Alderwoman Maria Haddon.
I rise in support of this resolution, Mr. President. Thank you so much. Um, it's great to see some familiar faces in the box. I want to lift up all of our community members who have, uh, worked very hard for many years to make the celebration for Juneteenth in our city possible. Um, I, in my first term, in my first year, I got an email from a, a friend, Lacretia Berts, from the Black Remembrance Project, uh, saying, hey, you know what? We're working on this initiative. We're connected to people nationwide, and we want to make Juneteenth a holiday in the city of Chicago. And, um, I'm a sophomore now. Some of my more senior colleagues, I think, uh, maybe chuckled at me a little bit when I brought it to them. Um, but I'm still somebody who likes to respond to emails and answer phone calls and take meetings with people who I don't know. Um, and I'm really glad that we were able to work with the Black Remembrance Project, with Black Culture Week Chicago, and with so many other community partners, that this table has just grown. And I think it actually, this is a great demonstration of what we should be doing in our elected offices, what government can do to support. We don't always have to be the people entering the ordinance, or leading the fight, or standing at the podium. Um, but we need to listen to our community. There are so many things that we're not able to do on our own. I was really excited to have, uh, a group of people who had a vision, uh, who had a dream, who'd been doing the work, that I could support, right, in an effort to make this holiday possible. And it was very exciting to celebrate it for the third year at our flag raising on Friday. Um, so for Juneteenth, um, like Pride, Juneteenth is a holiday for all of us to celebrate. I know a lot of people are still learning about what it is, this Emancipation Day or Freedom Day. Um, if you have questions about it, Alderman Kapelman's not here anymore, our Galveston, Texas native, to tell us about the history, but we can talk about it after council, because I know we're already getting lengthy on our resolution. So I just want to say, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to all of our, uh, staff in the city, to all the colleagues who supported it, and to our community members, especially, uh, my guy Torrance over there, um, for all of your hard work, your countless hours in making this grow each year, uh, and, and truly putting Chicago's mark on the Juneteenth holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, um, you know, I too stand in support of this resolution. Um, this past, uh, Monday, as we celebrated Juneteenth, I had an opportunity to see a, a documentary, uh, film that was produced by, uh, the publishers of The Daily Bread, which those of us who attend church on a regular basis know that little, uh, book they give you every quarter for your daily devotional. But what it talked about and what it showed was the real history behind the holiday. And it talked about the, the, the struggles of our, uh, of our ancestors and the resiliency of our people, uh, leading up to that particular point. But it also talked about the challenges that we have faced since then and continue to deal with today. Um, it was probably one of the most powerful documentaries that I've seen in a very long time, and it gave a, 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 a unique perspective about the position that our people have been put in throughout their time and experience here in these United States of America. Talked about the labor that our ancestors put in to make this country what it is today. And i- in some respects, opens up a much broader conversation that I, that I hope that we take up as a council, uh, not only here locally, but also through the halls of legislatures throughout this nation of the issue of reparations. Because through the struggle that has been identified, and the, the work that our ancestors have put in, and the work to repair the damage that has been done, uh, to members of the African-American community in this country, um, it, it's, it's, it's really deep. And I, I'm, and I, at some point, and Alderman Tullia Pharaoh and I sat and watched that documentary, and I think it's something that all of us need to take a look at so that we can understand the challenges that the Black community has faced in this country, and what we as a, as a, as a council, and what we as Americans can do to help solve some of this inequity that has been generated, uh, by such. But I do want to thank, uh, the, the, the members in the box. I see some of my residents in the box over there, uh, Mr. TJ Crawford, Ms. Johnson. We want to thank you for the work you guys have been doing, uh, in the community, especially in the Garfield Park community, toward Juneteenth and the festival that you all put on, and everything that's been done to bring this awareness to members of our community. But again, uh, as we remember, the reason we do remember it so that we do not forget, because where if we don't understand our history, we're bound to repeat it. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Desmond Niansey.
Thank you, President. Uh, stand here in support of the work of folks like TJ Crawford and Lacretia Berts, who worked really hard to make sure that we understood and celebrated our freedom here in Chicago. Uh, today, I wear the colors of the Juneteenth flag, uh, as the, as an American descendant of slavery, whose family still owns the land that they share cropped on in Freetown, Louisiana. Uh, I'm a child of the Great Migration by way of Arkansas and Louisiana, and the grandson of the first Black man elected to serve in St. Mary Parish City Council following Reconstruction. I stand here today in support of this resolution as the first Black man elected to represent the Fifth Ward, and, um, the, the, the result of the prayers of my ancestors, uh, and those who have all come before all of us. And I will use my power and this role as representing the Fifth Ward, uh, to work for freedom and advance the cause of all Black Chicagoans. So thank you.
Alderman. Chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I was unable to attend the flag raising on Friday. However, on Monday, I was, uh, very proud to take the train with my eleven-year-old daughter, uh, to visit, um, Daily Center, and to, uh, take a picture with the flag, or take a picture mostly of my daughter with the flag. And it was really empowering to have a real discussion with her as we were writing downtown about what this holiday means, um, particularly to all Chicagoans. The fact is that we need to recognize the struggle for freedom, the continued struggle for freedom and liberation that African-Americans face in this country. And I'm very humbled by the fact that our young people get it more than my generation ever will, or generations before us ever would. The fact is, is that we need to learn from our young people, the way in which they engage, the way in which they lead, because they're showing us the path. And if Monday was any example of a young lady, not of African-American descent, identifying or trying to identify with that struggle, and trying to understand, understand what that struggle means, I'm very heartened about our future. And I thank the folks who moved this legislation forward the last term. I was happy to support it. And I will be very happy to support into the future other efforts, uh, that speak to the fight that is, that was, and will always be liberation for all communities, but particularly those who are the descendants of African slaves. I stand with you today, and I will stand with you in the future. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes the third best gentleman today, Alderman Burnett. Congratulations, sir.
First of all, I beg to differ with that third best, man. But anyway, uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. I also rise to stand in support of this resolution. You know, thinking about, uh, a hundred and fifty-eight years ago, well, actually, a hundred and sixty years ago, folks got free. The Emancipation Proclamation was written, and, and people, two hundred and fifty thousand people did not know that they were free yet. Two hundred and fifty thousand people did not know that they were free. And probably the folks who were enslaving them, I'm sure they knew, but they took advantage of the situation. And we think about, you know, being enslaved, how that affect people's self-esteem, how it affects people's hopes and their dreams. And we're talking about a hundred and sixty years ago, or a hundred and fifty-eight years ago, when folks found out, I would beg to say that we are still not free, all of us. There are still folks in our community that are still enslaved with low self-esteem, and don't believe that they're free to do things that everybody else do in this society because of certain limitations that folks in our society put on us, or give us the impression that we can't do. We still have people, you know, even though we have a lot of kids running downtown, there's still folks who won't go downtown because of certain reasons, because they feel like they're not welcome. You know, there's folks who won't go, you know, I, I, you know, I grew up in Cabrini-Green. There's still people from Cabrini who just won't walk three blocks to go and get a job because of self-esteem. And they'll tell you in a minute that they're not gonna hire us because of who we are and where we come from. We still have a challenge here in America dealing with, you know, the residue of slavery and how it has impacted the people in our communities across this country, because it really did a job on Because it really did a job on the self-esteem of our people. And it's up to all of us who know that we're free, who aren't afraid of taking a step toward success or happiness or whatever the case may be, to let everybody else know that we are free. We're free to go downtown. We're free to ask for a job. We're free to go and challenge things and be told no and try again. It's up to us to continue to tell people that we are free. It's up to us to continue to tell the folks who come from like public housing or different neighborhoods, who in these cliques feel like that's the only way they can make it by being in that clique. They feel like that's the only way that they can eat by getting fed by those cliques. We need to let them know that you can do more than just being that clique because you're free. You can make just as much money doing something positive and legal because you're free. So many people in our community are doing things underground because we don't think that we're free to do things the right way. So we need to continue to take days like this to recognize and make folks in our community recognize that we are free. We are free to do anything and everything that anybody else can and are doing in this society. So I celebrate this day to know that I'm free, but also celebrate this day to let other people know in our society that you are free too. You just had to take that step, and we all need to help each other continuously. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman woman Emma Metz.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council. As I reflect on the holiday, thank you, Maria, for your dedication and hard work getting this passed through the City Council so that we will be able to celebrate it. But this is a holiday that started out in our community through a young man named Ricky Brown, who taught us about Juneteenth early on in my political career as Alderman. So it wasn't the first time that I had heard it. But the fact to me, Juneteenth, when we say free, we have to free our mind. Once we free our mind, we are able to make steps toward being free in anything we do. If I look back from my time of 1955 and just think about my grandparents and my great-grandparents to see the struggle, we have to be able to endure struggles and challenge, knowing that we will be able to succeed, letting nothing to stop us. Yes, we may have racism, but racism can be your own worst enemy if you digest that. We should not even be thinking of that. We should be thinking of how we can have the best. Because these are the things our forefathers, our grandparents, great-grandparents, those who have passed long before fought for when we talked about free. They were abused, misused, stumped, beat, tortured, burned. Those are the ones who really paid a price for us, and they wanted us to have the best. They wanted us to have an education because they couldn't get an education. This is what the younger generation need to know. We didn't just get here because somebody gave it to you, that you had to work for it. And they need to know you got to work now. No one just give you anything. You don't start from A and get to Z. You got to go through all the alphabets to get to the end. And once we learn how to do these things, we'll be a better race. We can enjoy life. Family, family is a, if you want to talk Juneteenth, even in the slavery days, families stuck together. We have to be willing to make sure that families get the necessity that they need. First, worshiping someone a higher power, a higher power. Today, Juneteenth, there is something you need to have. Who wakes you up in the morning? How do you do this stuff just on your own? Are you able to have your ears to hear, eyes to see? These are things people just take for granted until you don't have them anymore. That's the same about life, taking it for granted. It's important to have a base, religious base. Juneteenth, if we celebrate, there was a base, religious base, something called "Thy should not steal," the 10th commandment. Then why do you steal? Who teaches that "Thy should not steal"? Who teaches you honor your mother and father? Who teaches these things? Do we not believe that? I do. I really do. Something, because I know I'm not doing it myself. I didn't wake up being good. I have to have some help. And my help comes from the Lord, somebody that give me that peace, that passes all understandings that we don't have. And so as we celebrate and we talk about changes, until I see folks turning from their wicked ways, turning from what they think and looking for that higher power to help them to want to be better, to help them to want to do what's right, to help them end their everyday life, putting aside the negative and picking up the positive. That's, that's the way that all of us should go. And for our, talking about free, until we start getting these things in order, putting our father first, then we're going to still be running around in the wilderness trying to find why, why we say we're free, but we're not free. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other members of this body that wish to speak to this resolution? Okay. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez. Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Stephanie Coleman.
Mr. President, as the newly-elected Chair of the Black Caucus, I could not stand in solidarity of thanking our leaders right here, TJ and my brother from Pullman Porter and ladies for being our leaders and to let you know and recommit that this caucus will be unified and in coalition with you all as we are preparing and working on the Black agenda and the systemic racism, not across, not only across the nation, but right here in Chicago, how every day when we're losing our children and the gun violence. And we all know that it's because of disinvestment. That's been the biggest crime committed to us. So I want to thank you. I want to thank the members, the 20 members of the Chicago Automatic Black Caucus, and again reaffirm the unity, the coalition, and open communication that we will all be having, even with our other organizations in the city as we are working to improve the status of Black Chicago. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Alderman. One more time, are there any other members that wish to react to this resolution? Okay, seeing no hands, as we commemorate, I'm sorry, we do have another person. Oh, my apologies. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hoppinworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in solidarity and support of this resolution from 48th Ward, Andersonville, Edgewater, and Uptown, knowing that we live in one of the most segregated cities in the nation. What we can do together is pass policies and laws that will dismantle the structural racism that exists. And we start doing that locally with our families, in our schools, and how we talk about Juneteenth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I do apologize for missing you, Manah Hoppinworth. Are there any other members of this body that wish to address this body regarding this resolution? All right. Thank you very much, seeing no other hands. As we commemorate Juneteenth, let us not only honor the sacrifice of those of us who are descendants of slaves, but let's continue to recognize that our continuous struggle for liberation must continue. You know, this past weekend, we had the incredible opportunity yet again in the city of Chicago to raise the flag, the annual flag raising at Daily Plaza. There were a number of scholarships that were delivered for students across the city of Chicago in recognition of the Juneteenth holiday. I'm also grateful that the Juneteenth Melon Grant Announcement, which also included a commitment from the city of Chicago to make sure that we finish and finally build the Chicago Torture Justice Memorial. We are carrying the legacy of those who only could dream of this day. But as you all recognize, that particularly here in this body, there's been a number of dynamic decisions that have been made that have made this body an historic body. I'm grateful that we have the first Black Vice Mayor in the history of Chicago. I'm grateful that we have a budget, finance, and rules where Black leadership and liberation can take place without the exclusion of others. That is the core essence of who we are as a people. For decades, many of you know that Black communities have been starved and disinvested over the course of decade-old failed policies. But I am so grateful that we have a body and we have people in this great city that recognize that if we're going to restore the soul of Chicago, it starts on the West and South sides. If we continue, thank you, by our continuous work together, and we do it in an intentional way, I know that posterity will look back on this moment and say that this was a generation that did not flinch or cower under pressure. And so by recognizing Juneteenth with this resolution, we are committing ourselves yet again to justice, equity, and liberation. Thank you all again. And I want to recognize many of the members who are in this box today. Thank you, Theodore, Torrance, Lucretia, she's not here, my good friend Caitlin Johnson, no relation, Lauren, Richard, Alonzo Sherman, I don't know if he's left, Richard, Anton is somewhere around the city of Chicago doing great things, DeLisa, and I know that my dear sister Carol Johnson, no relation as well. There's a lot of Washingtons, but there are a lot of Johnsons. Let's congratulate these individuals as organizers, and thank you for your commitment. Alderman Mitchell, may I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage in the omnibus.
Very good, thank you. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And communications.
Communications from His Honor of the Mayor to the Honorable of the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the seating of excess and unallocated volume cap from the city's tax-exempt private activity volume bond cap. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance to Boulevard Department's Preservation LP for the rehabilitation of affordable housing. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of the Third Amendment to the Fuller to Milwaukee TIF redevelopment project and plan. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to the TIF appropriation ordinance for developing enabling infrastructure to the University of Illinois Discovery Partners Institute. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to the Administrator's contract for the Property Assess Clean Energy Program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit herewith a Fund 925 amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing a Class 6B tax incentive for a property located at 3815 South Ashland Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing a Class 6B tax incentive for a property located at 4510 West Ann Lurie Place. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing a right-of-way acquisition for the Burley Avenue Roadway Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance would be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Public Health, I transmit herewith, together with Alderman Vasquez, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of the former Diplomat Hotel to be used for the stabilization housing pilot program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties under the adjacent neighbors' land acquisition program. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the negotiated sale of a city-owned property located at 5324 West Ferdinand Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the negotiated sale of a city-owned property located at 5339 to 5345 South State Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Water Management, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with the Chicago Park District to lease a parkland at Durkin Park. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Fire Commissioner, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of a renewal agreement for continued participation in the mutual aid box alarm system. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Department of Planning and Development, together with Alderman Ramirez Rosa, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding vintage signs. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Zoning and Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Mary B. Richardson Lowry as Corporation Counsel. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Annette Guzman as a member and chair of the Chicago Emergency Telephone System Board for a term effective immediately and expiring July 1st, 2025, to complete the unexpired term of Susie Park, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby informs the City Council that the following documents were filed in her office relating to respective subjects designated as follows. Executive Order Number 2023-19 Regarding Budget Forecast and Financial Analysis. Notification as to Designation of Jill Jaworski and Mary B. Richardson Lowry as additional proxy to affix signature of mayor to certain documents. Funding Loan Notification of City of Chicago Multi-Family Housing Revenue Note, Series 2023, C4D Garfield Park. Office of Inspector General's Audit Report of Chicago Department of Public Health Construction and Demolition Debris Recycling Enforcement. City Clerk Valencia also informs the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the reconvened meeting held on May 31, 2023, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on June 21, 2023 by being printed in full text in printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of the Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. City Clerk Valencia also transmits herewith the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning Reclassifications of Particular Areas Which Were Refused to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Claims Against the City of Chicago Which Were Refused to the Committee on Finance. And Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation of Greater Tabernacle Cathedral at 11300 South Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive as a Chicago Landmark, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the Mayor and other city officials.
Thank you. Now, committed reports. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman, the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on June 14, 2023. The following items received a due-pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the restructuring of a loan agreement with Renaissance Partners Limited Partnership (Renaissance Partners Corporation) for additional financial assistance or modification through a multifamily grant in the amount of $600,000 and tax increment financing funds in the amount of $5,313,737 for the property located at 3757 through 3763 South Wabash Avenue in the Third Ward. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any items, I'm sorry, are there any members wish to speak to those items? All right, seeing no hands. Members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
Please hit refresh and please mark your votes. If you're having difficulty, please raise your hand and someone will come assist. Alderman Hall? Alderman Hall is a yes. Alderwoman Lee? Oh, did you hit? Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Coleman, not in the chambers. Alderwoman Taylor? Oh, is it? Yes, okay, sorry. There we go. Alderman Cardona, not in here. Alderman Ramirez Rosa, just voted. Alderman Vasquez, your vote, please? Alderman Vasquez is a yes? Please add him. And then, yep, okay, we can close the vote. Chris Coleman and Cardona aren't in here. Voting is now closed.
There are 48 yeas and zero nays. This matter has passed. Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor, Alderman Mitchell has moved to reconsider the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying no. The motion fails.
Mr. President, item number two is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the issuance of tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue bonds or notes in the amount of $29 million to DL3 Thrive Exchange LI Long Income Housing Tax Credit, South LLC, for the acquisition of property located at the southeast corner of 79th Street and South Exchange in the Seventh Ward. Unless someone wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee of Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds or notes in the amount of $21 million to New City Redevelopment Limited Partnership for acquisition of property at 1515 West 47th Street and 1635 through 1641 West 47th Street for the construction of the United Yards Mixed Affordable Housing Projects in the 20th Ward. Unless someone wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Your Chair recognizes Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we had the pleasure of having breakfast in the gallery, and one of those folks who was actually there was Jesse from Back of the Yard Coffee. He is actually a part of this process, and so what I will say about this project is this was the way that the city and the community actually worked together, because there were a couple of different folks. The community voted on one project, the city chose another, and of course, I was somewhere stuck in the middle, and so I was glad that the city actually listened to the community and said, hey, why not have the best of both worlds? And so I'm excited that 47th and Ashland that is in my community is getting some upkeep, but I do not want us to forget what those families in that community actually asked for, which is improvements on their homes and their furnaces and things like that. And so while I'm grateful that this is coming to my community and we get some upkeep, we still got some more work to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
That motion, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Then the Chair will recognize Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Mr. President. I missed a vote. Could you count me as a yes on that one vote, on that one vote, please?
So, we have people who are still, individuals who still wish to speak. What we'll do is we'll conclude this and then we'll make, I'll take it up then, okay? Is that okay? The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and if I may, on behalf of Alderman Cardona, move to suspend the rules to allow him to have his first, his vote recorded on the first most favorable item of the Finance Committee.
Are there any objections to the motion to suspend the rules so that Alderman Cardona can cast his vote on the first vote? The Chair, well, the Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
We have a vote on the floor. Once this vote is taken, then his motion will be in order, and then it will be properly probably voted on. But we should vote on that, her motion first.
So, thank you, Alderman Beal. As indicated earlier, I would like to respectfully ask how you wish to proceed. I'm prepared and willing to allow Cardona to cast his vote once this vote has been cast. Is that okay?
That's fine, Mr. President.
Very good. All right. And do you still want recognition for something else?
Yes.
Okay, so for something else, the Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
I think I'm going to have that engraved on my nameplate here, Alderman Lopez, for something else. But I too rise in support of this item, though it is not in my ward. It is in my neighboring ward with Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor, but we do share and represent the same community of Back of the Arts, and this collaboration between our wards within one community actually should be a model for other wards whose boundaries intersect within communities, because our communication on this development, which actually is for the greater Back of the Arts corridor at 47th and Ashland, who many of you may know and remember starting at Swaparama on down, is now between the two of us, and we have been working closely together to ensure that there are no surprises, no gotchas, and no unexpected developments from either side of the street, because nobody benefits when Aldermen don't talk to each other. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank my colleague and voice my support for this project and all the other projects that she has undoubtedly helped us on as well on our side of the street and look forward to continuing that effort. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other individuals that wish to speak to this item? All right, hearing none, Chair recognizes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dow. I renew that motion.
Okay, that motion has been renewed. So hearing no objections, so ordered. The Chair now recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be recorded on the first, on the first vote on the Committee of Finance, please.
I trust that there are no objections and you wish to be added as a yes?
Yes.
You got it. Is that a parliamentary presentation? You got it? Okay, it'll do. And Alderwoman, thank you for bringing so many drinks this morning. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number four is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the amendment of an ordinance which authorized a redevelopment agreement with Amani Senior Village Phase 1 LLC for the development of Amani Village at 9633 South Cottage Grove Avenue in the Eighth Ward. Unless someone wishes to speak on this motion, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Okay, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number five is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning conveyance of city-owned property at 4553, 4555, 4559, 4569, North Pulaski Road, and provision of open space impact fee funds to neighbor space for the First Nations Garden Project in the 33rd Ward. It's $93,000 in opens, $93,990 in open space fees, $350,000 in TIF, and $500,000 from the Chicago Recovery Plan. Unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by the most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands, so ordered. Madam Chair.
Item number six is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning a First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Chicago Park District to increase tax increment financing funds in the amount of $2,755,266 for the renovation of the public fieldhouse at Black Hawk Park located at 2318 North Laverne Avenue in the 31st Ward. Unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number seven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the redevelopment agreement with and the provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $2,988,535 to Steep Theater Company for the renovation and construction of a new theater venue and community space at 5300 through 5318 North Kenmore in the 48th Ward. Unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number eight is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning a redevelopment agreement with and provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $5 million to 221 East 49th Street LLC for the development of Overton Center of Excellence at 221 East 49th Street in the Third Ward. I don't wish to speak on that, and unless somebody wishes to speak on that, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands, so ordered.
Items number nine and 10 consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago. the City of Chicago and denial of payments of various small claims against the City of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these be placed on the omnibus. Item number 11 is a report of cases in which-
No objection, I'm sorry, seeing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 11 is a report of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were entered into for the month of April 2023 and the month of May 2023. These will be placed on file with the clerk. Mr. President, I would like to take items 12A, 12B, and 12D together, and we will leave item 12C for a separate discussion. Item 12A is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Lana Triplet versus Adam Corona and the City of Chicago cited as 2019 L 7771 in the amount of $400,000. Unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote.
Sorry, just for clarity, are we doing A, C, and D together, or?
Um, yes, we can do that. Item number 12B-
I'm sorry, B, 12A?
I just read 12A.
Yep, 12B?
12B, item number, is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Joshua Habasek Benelli versus the City of Chicago cited as number 22 CV 3668 in the amount of $550,000. And item number 12C-
D?
I mean, D, excuse me, is an order authorizing the Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Arthur Brown versus the City of Chicago cited as number 18 CV 7064 in the amount of $7,250,000. Unless someone wishes to speak on these items, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Okay, so no hands and no objections, just for clarity, 12A, B, and D at once? Hearing, seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 12C is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Angela Williams, independent administrator of the estate of Sherrell Brown, deceased, versus City of Chicago, Officer Robert Rhodes, and Officer Joseph Lisandrello, cited as number 21L 11688 in the amount of $1 million. I move that we have a roll call on this, Mr. President, after the council speaks, and I reserve the right to close.
Are there any individuals that wish to speak to item 12C? Okay, the Chair recognizes 34th Ward, Alderman Conway. Is this your first time speaking?
No, I've, I've had a few things-
Oh, have you?
-that are clearly not particularly memorable, but that's okay.
It's good. Well, your hair looks amazing today, too, Alderman Conway.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Shea butter.
So, yeah, it's a, it's a rubber cement Shea butter, man. So, Mr. President, I voted, I voted no on this committee. I often think in our city, we are, we are too quick to, to settle these sorts of cases. And as someone who was a prosecutor in this city for, for seven years, I find it important that we evaluate each case based on the evidence that's before us. When, when presented, it was my understanding that the shutting off of the, the body camera in this matter may have been unintentional. However, since that hearing, I have spoken to investigators from COPA, reviewed that evidence, and now I believe it, it was intentional. So I will be voting yes to support this settlement, and I encourage my, my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Conway. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. And your hair looks nice today, too.
It's coconut oil.
Mr. President, members of the council, just want to back, backtrack a little on this to some people, especially some of the newbies. This was brought up in January of this year, and then Finance held it for rather obvious reasons, I feel, back then. It didn't look like it was going to pass, and I respectfully disagree with my colleague here that this should not pass. Let me give a little background for those of you that didn't get to make it to the briefing. Unfortunately, my first briefing that I missed since we've been briefing, but I did get a private briefing from law, and we did hear in, in Finance, kind of some of the things that would happen. So basically, this individual was pulled over because he fit the description of an armed rob, an armed robber. So these two police officers pulled him over, which by the way, they're somewhat decorated officers, working in a busy district. They stopped to talk to the individual, and when these officers stopped to talk to this individual, they noticed a bulge in his pants, in the side of his pants I'm talking about. It looked like maybe it could have been a gun. They felt, felt like a gun. At that point, Brown fled. Police chased them down. Obviously, he was shot and killed. A gun was recovered, not on his person, but a gun was recovered. Gun did have no bullets in it, they say, but we don't know what happened with the bullets. But whether it's a squirt gun, a real gun, a gun was recovered, and all indications are it was his gun. This individual was not an honor roll student. This individual was not a choir boy at church. This individual is a bad dude. This guy was charged with eight felonies, people, eight felonies, convicted for five of them. So I just want to make sure everybody knows, I don't know how many minds I'm going to sway, it's not too often I'm going to sway people's minds here, but I just want to make sure everybody knows that the sin of the police officer here was turn his body camera off too soon. He had it on, but he turned it off too soon. It's not that he didn't turn it off, didn't turn it on, he had it on, once again. So turned it off a little too soon. I believe, and I, I guess I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm pretty sure COPA didn't charge him with any wrongdoing with the shooting. Maybe somebody else knows and is going to speak on that. But bottom line is, police officers are doing their job, stopped a guy who fit the description of armed robbery suspect, had a gun, they shot him, they killed him. We should not be paying this family a million dollars. So with that, I'm a no vote on this, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other older persons wish to speak to this item? Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this settlement. It's a difficult case, but it's the right thing to do, as Alderman Conway indicated. There's an operative fact, and it does look like the body worn camera was disabled with intent. I just want to point out that when we first started using body worn cameras, the motivation behind it was to protect civilians from excessive force by police. It's ironic that today, in many instances, body worn cameras actually protect the police officers, because they document the truth. They're a silent witness to what is happening, and when police officers are acting within their training, acting within the boundaries of the law, using force in an appropriate manner to save their life or the life of other innocent people, the body worn camera provides evidence that that is in fact what's happened. In this case, I think it's, it's unfortunate that it was turned off for whatever reason. If it were left on, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion, because the case would be clear, and it wouldn't have gotten to this point where settling is actually the right thing to do, to protect us from exposure to a potentially multimillion dollar judgment that we would be on the hook for, and then we would have to pay for attorney fees as well. But when we first started using body worn cameras, the technology was a bit more primitive compared to today. We need to revisit this. This case should provide us with the motivation to look more carefully at how the equipment operates, how the video files are stored. When we first got body worn cameras, we were limited. We couldn't store endless hours of video footage to have the opportunity to go back in time and look for something, because storage was, was too expensive. That's no longer the case now. Battery technology has advanced to the point where we shouldn't have dead batteries on a constant basis. There's new technology available to have extended battery life, so officers shouldn't feel like they have to turn off their body worn camera to save batteries. These things should be operated at all times. Anytime police are engaging with citizens or members of the community, they should be on dashboards, they should be body worn, and as we continue to expand the use of pole mounted pod cameras, that technology that we're using is a little bit outdated right now as well. We need to look at, at modifying that. Perhaps that's something that we should be talking about in the upcoming budget, because this technology can do two things, can protect the police, and it can protect the citizens. There's no reason not to embrace it and go forward with it, because it stands for the truth, as I'm sure everyone in this body does as well. I support this settlement, not because I agree with what happened that night, but because it's the right thing to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman Hopkins. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in opposition now, as I rose in opposition in January. What we have seen in this body, time and time again, are settlements to those magnets of violence in our community. I, for one, am sick of paying. My communities are tired of reading headlines where we have to pay to the criminal who's in our midst. Our officers were in fact replying, responding, excuse me, to an event of an armed robber. This individual not only matched the description, but was also armed. And we keep getting contradictory messaging from bureaucrats, from policymakers, and even from some elected officials, when we say that we want a safe city, but yet we have some groups, some people, and some leaders who would have the temerity to say something as outrageous that a person with a weapon isn't a threat to anyone, least of all a police officer. We don't get to have it both ways. If you are walking around with a gun in your hand, a gun in your side, like this, I'm pretty sure you're not standing around just touching yourself. You're holding on to a weapon that's going to be used at some point to maim or kill, not the gangbanger or drug dealer you're looking at, but probably the five-year-old 100 feet away, the grandmother just stepping out of her house to go grocery shopping, or the dad going to work. Because we are so inconsistent, because we keep making excuses, and because people know that they can get paid by this body, this behavior goes unchecked. Now, I know, Mr. President, whether the officer turned it off 20 seconds too soon or whatnot, that is not necessarily something that should automatically put us on the hook and relieve the offender of his responsibility as well. And too often, these settlements gloss over what brought these two groups together. I heard a lot about intersectionality earlier. This intersectionality has to come to an end. Because, ladies and gentlemen, this will not be the last time we're having this debate. This will not be the last time that myself or Alderman Spazaro are going to stand up, or other members are going to stand up and say, no, we can't keep rewarding criminality. It will come again, and we as a city, we as a body, Mr. President, you as the head of this bureaucracy, we all need to come together with an understanding of what we're going to do to address the settlement issue that continuously rewards those who are causing so much of the violence and pain that we see in our neighborhoods. I understand we have to pay when we make mistakes. I understand when we are truly at fault, as we did with some of the other settlements. I understand that. I accept that. And I have voted for lawsuits where I felt that our officers were complete, just a breakdown in procedure. But I also have stood firm on this, and I ask my colleagues to do so as well. Say no, send a clear message that we, in this term, are not going to continue rewarding the criminals for the acts that they perform in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Julia Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is actually my first time speaking on city council. No, I appreciate it. You know, I'm act, I'm, I'm feeling really anxious, you know? I feel really passionate about this subject at hand. I want to represent some people on city council that will say that we will not choose to judge people for their past, that they will have their fair day at court, that we will not justify killing people for the things that they have done, but rather, rather continue creating opportunities for what they can do in the future. I have lost my brother to gun violence, and though some people may believe that that's different, the pain is the same, and we cannot compensate our families for the hurt that they feel. But what I do know is that it is right today that we serve justice to this family, and may that man rest in peace.
Thank you, Alderwoman Ramirez, and thank you, and congratulations on your first presentation. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro. And I didn't mean to roll the R that way, I just-
Mr. President, you did well. Mr. President, I, I rise just to speak to our lawsuits overall. We're paying over 125 million plus almost every year in law settlements, and, and I think it's time that we address the process by which we do that. This past week, we were, or week before, we were engaged in a process where a lot of information wasn't able to be shared in committee. And I have major concern about that, when we were settling suits upward of 5, 10, 15 million dollars. And so I think we have to come to a process whereby our Corporation Council isn't before us encouraging us to settle suits. And I think the reason I say that is primarily because when that happens, oftentimes, facts are not given that should have been given to help us make a more educated decision. We are often in a room with Corporation Council when they're explaining what happened in a particular case, and the facts are often one-sided. We're not telling the whole picture. And I disagree with my colleague in that we do have to look at the history of the person that we're selling this suit, settling this suit for, because we have to look at all facts, whether that be the complementary history of a police officer, the past disciplinary history of a police officer. We need all facts before us and not a sell on why the city should settle. And, and so I've, I've spoken with our chairwoman in hopes of being able to go into executive session during the time that we're having committee to whereby we can receive facts, whereas the city may not necessarily want to put that information or make that information public because of a pending trial or a possible pending trial. So I, I, I think we need to revamp our process. Rather than selling us on settling a lawsuit, I believe we need to start looking at presenting facts from not only the plaintiff's side, but also the defendant's side as well. And with that, Mr. President, I'll, I'll be voting no on that, because I believe that all the information that I wanted for this particular case was not presented in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Talia Faro. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I take a slightly different view on this particular situation. I do, in some respects, agree with my colleague Alderman Talia Faro, the 29th Ward, but at the end of the day, all we want is constitutionally sound policing, at the end of the day. Constitutionally sound policing. And it does not matter what someone did five years ago, 10 years ago, five months ago. In that moment, are they being treated in the manner in which they deserve to be treated as citizens of this country and citizens of our, of our city? Granted, the other, that's part one. Part two is the litigious nature in, in Cook County, specifically in our federal court system, that in some cases gives higher attorney fee awards than actual settlement, the, the cost of whatever damage was incurred. Now, we have a- Now, we have attorneys that are employed by us to give us sound advice on particular situations. And it is their responsibility to bring us what they believe is in the corporation's best interest. Because everybody wants to play cowboy, but it's not your money. If you want to put your money on the table and roll the dice, come on. I have yet to hear anybody say that they're going to put their money on the table and roll the dice. But when it's taxpayers' money, it's okay to, let's say, well, let's go to trial on this, and if it doesn't pan out, then, oh, I'm not the one that has to deal with the consequences of that. Either we trust our lawyers or we don't. And I believe that our lawyers would not bring to us, in this particular case, a matter that's not going to be cost-effective to settle in the interest of the taxpayers of this city. And again, it's easy to roll the dice when it's not your money. When you don't have to pay when it goes south, it's easy to make those types of decisions. But again, we have a responsibility to do what's in the best interest of the taxpayers of this city. And our Corporation Council has that same aligned responsibility. And again, I've had to sit down in the magistrate's office talking about settlement agreements and the like. It is not a pretty picture. And again, when you start thinking about the fact that the legal fees can be astronomical in these types of cases, we have to know and understand what the process is because it's easy to just say, no, let's not do this. But I think we have to do what's prudent and in the best interest of the taxpayers. Yes, we do need to do more around the issues of risk management because we should not continue to keep going down the same path without any type of consequences. I agree with that 100% fully, and I've explained that to our designated for Corporation Council. And I believe that she will begin to attack some of those issues. But today, we've got to solve the problem that's before us, and a cost-effective settlement is in the best interest of the city. And I would encourage everyone to vote in support of that.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other individuals that wish to speak to this item? Chair recognizes Alderman Yancey.
Mr. President, I'll be voting in support of this settlement, but I'm troubled because this is the price that we're paying for failing to build a public safety system that holds bad police officers accountable and keeps all of us safe. And I pray that this is the last time I have to vote for a settlement with this sort of tension, but I'm afraid that it won't be. And until we build a public accountability system that holds bad police accountable, and again, make sure that we all feel safe, we're going to continue to have these sorts of discussions about what's important. Human life is important. Dignity and respect is important. And again, I'll be voting in support of this, but we got to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Seeing no other hands, this has been, a roll call vote has been requested. And so I will now ask that all members please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
Okay, voting is now open. Please hit refresh and mark your vote. If you need assistance, please raise your hand. Okay, we will now take a voice vote from those who have not voted. Alderman Hall, he is a yes. Please mark Alderman Hall as a yes. Alderwoman Scott? Oh, perfect. Is it? Refresh. Okay. Do you want to do a voice vote? Yes, Alderman Scott is a yes. And then Alderman Vasquez, can we please have your vote? Alderman Vasquez is also a yes. Okay, voting is now closed.
Thank you. With 35 votes in favor, 15 votes against, this item passes. Oh, yes. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider the vote, Mr. President.
All those in favor on the motion to reconsider this vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chair Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had wanted to speak before we took the vote.
Oh, my apologies.
That's okay. I just wanted to say that, you know, these cases are very, very difficult and very, very sensitive. And I would just encourage my colleagues that we need to look at all sides, the plaintiff and the defendant's side. We just can't blame the victim. We have to also look at the actions of the police officers. And also, in every case, we have to be balanced. And I have had a beginning discussion with our new Corporation Council about some of the concerns raised by Alderman Talia Faro. And my pledge to this committee is that, to this council, is that we will struggle and work through these issues as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairwoman Dow, for your leadership. The Chair would like to ask Alderwoman Coleman if you wish to be added in the first committee reference vote.
Yes, please.
As a...
I move to suspend the rule so that I be counted as present for the first item.
You don't have to suspend the rules. I got you.
Okay.
That is an official parliamentary axiom now. So you will be added as a yes. I got you. Thank you. Oh, yes. So there are Alderman Beal, Coleman, Gardner. Oh, yes, so Alderman Beal, Coleman, Curtis, and Gardner. At the time of this meeting being convened, you were not here for attendance. Do you wish to be added as part of the roll call quorum? Okay, thank you. All right, so Beal, Coleman, Curtis, and Gardner are all present. Do we have perfect attendance? That makes me feel so good as a teacher. All right, committee reports. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. It should also make you feel good to spend some money. Budget Committee as well. So, Mr. President, and members of the Council reporting for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on June 20 of 2023. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item number one is the appointment of Annette Guzman as the Director of Budget for the City of Chicago. If there are any comments? Comments? Okay, well...
Thank you. We do have one individual so far who wishes to speak to this incredible, joyous day. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Council. Annette, unfortunately, I missed the meeting yesterday. I don't know how I missed it. I didn't have it on my calendar. So I apologize, but I told you on the phone, you 100% have my support. And I also did tell you I'll probably be calling you more than anybody. So I hope you don't mind me. I'm anxious to get your cell phone, especially come October, November at budget time. I'll really be leaning on you a lot, but best wishes to you. Congratulations on this appointment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazaro. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I would move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Congratulations.
Seeing no additional hands and hearing no objections, so ordered. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is a proposed ordinance concerning a Neighborhood Opportunity Funds Award Letter Amendment to extend the project completion date and increase the grant to Little Village Business Incubator LLC for commercial renovations. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered. Chairman Irvin.
Item number three is a proposed ordinance concerning an annual appropriation ordinance year 2023 amendment within Fund 925 for the Department of Housing, Mayor's Office of People for Disabilities, Department of Family and Support Services, Early Childhood, Emergency Housing, Department of Transportation, Congestion Management Technologies Deployment. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Seeing no hands, hearing no objections, so ordered.
And final item is item number four is a proposed ordinance concerning the transfer of funds within the Committee on Committees and Rules for year 2023. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
No one wishes to speak, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Concludes report.
Thank you, Chairman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Economic and Capital Technology Development Chairman Vegas.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the City Council reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. On Tuesday, June 13, 2023, the Committee held an in-person meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items one through five on the agenda are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas, collectively voted on by the Committee members and introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during the April 19, 2023 City Council meeting. The appointment of Whitney Castle to SSA number 20, Southwestern Avenue Commission located in 19th Ward. Appointment of Mary Ann Candido to SSA number 22, Clark Street, Andersonville Commission located in 40th, 47th, and 48th Wards. Reappointment of Dominic Erpino, SSA number 34, Uptown Commission located in 46, 47th, and 48th Wards. Appointment of Aaron White to SSA number 50, Kellyman Heights Avalon Commission located in the 5th and 8th Wards. Reappointment of John Ratzenberger to SSA number 21-2016, Lincoln Square Commission located in the 40th and 47th Wards. I move for passage of these appointments and reappointments by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered.
Last item on the agenda was an ordinance passed by Committee members to approve a prorated 2023 budget and service provider agreement with the Portage Park Chamber of Commerce for Special Service Area number 28-2014, Six Corners Commission. This ordinance was introduced by Mayor Johnson at the May 24, 2023 City Council meeting. I move for passage of this ordinance by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee of Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Thank you, Chairman. Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. The Chair recognizes Housing and Real Estate Chairman Alderman Byron Sico Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which was held in person, in an in-person meeting on June 12, 2023. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following ordinances. Item number one was the approval of the Rule 45 report for April. Item number two, 02023-1588, amendment ordinance which authorize Building Neighborhoods and Affordable Housing Purchase Price Assistance Program, BNAH, for givable grants, now transferring funds into the program and authorizing promulgation of rules for administration. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Housing and Real Estate, associated, also self-motion to reconsider. Of Finance. Finance, associating as a self-motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number three, 02023-2057, release of city deed restrictions for appraised monetary consideration on property at 2236 West Adams Street, owned by Eddie Winters in the 27th Ward. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered. Chairman, if you wish, we can bundle these all together, and we can just take one vote at the very end. Is that okay?
Yeah, I got no objection unless anyone has any objection in any items.
All right, thank you. So we'll just, we'll indulge and hear you read through them, and we'll bring it all together for one final vote. Is that okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you want me just to...
Just, I think you were on number four now.
Number four?
Yes.
All right. And item number four is item 02023-1646 restructuring agreement. This is in the 5th Ward. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
So we're just going to keep going? You're going to do number five, six?
Yeah, so just keep doing, just simplify.
Just keep going, yeah, right away. Yeah, not that no one has anywhere else to be today, but I just, let's just bring it all together.
Want to make sure, yeah, I'll read it quickly. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. Item number five, the First Amendment to Right to Entry and Building Maintenance and Protection Agreement in the 37th Ward. Item six is item 02023-1646, sale of city-owned property in the 3rd Ward.
I think that was 43, Alderman?
Yeah, this is, this is in the 3rd Ward. This is item six.
You said 1646. So I just want to make sure we get it right. 02023?
1643.
1643, okay, please continue.
Correct, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. President. Item number seven is item 02023-1642, sale of as-e city-owned property in the 3rd Ward. Item number eight was deferred to the next committee meeting. Item number nine, 02023-2056, a negotiated sale of as-e city-owned property in the 7th Ward. Item number 10 is item 02023-2058, sale of city-owned property in the 24th Ward. Item 11 is ordinance 02023-2059, sale of city-owned property also in the 24th Ward. Item number 12 is item 02023-2060, sale of city-owned property in the 20th Ward. Item 13, item 02023-2061, sale of city-owned property in the 27th Ward. Item 14, item 02023-2062, sale of city-owned property in the 24th Ward. Item 15, 02023-2078, sale of city-owned property also in the 24th Ward. And finally, is item 16, 02026-2080, redevelopment agreement negotiated as e-sale of five vacant city-owned parcels in the 4th Ward. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Seeing no hands, well done, Chairman. And no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. The Chair recognizes the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on June 15, 2023 to consider the following ordinances. an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code of Chicago designating the 37th precinct of the 13th Ward as restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing and vacation rentals. Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendations of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So we'll do that for this one? Is it okay if we bundle them all together?
Yep, I've got them bundled for the next one.
How about we do that? How about we just bundle them all, and we'll hold the motion?
I have five ordinances regarding the moratoriums in Wards 10, 11, 19, 42, and 45. O2023-2088. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Seeing no hands, no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Chair recognizes the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. The Chair recognizes Chairman Lasbada.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety for which a meeting was held on Wednesday, June 14th, 2023. Speaking of item bundling before the committee, there were 123 items. There were 123 routine traffic items that passed and zero routine traffic items that did not pass. We also held a subject matter hearing on pedestrian and traffic safety impacts during the upcoming NASCAR races during which no votes were taken. I move passage of these items in the omnibus.
Show off. Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The Chair recognizes the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Chairman Lasbada.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council are reporting on your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, which was held on June 15th, which by the way somehow, some way, that was our longest meeting ever. The Committee recommends passage of the following items. I guess the trend is rebundling, so I only have two items, so I guess I'll bundle them. Item 2023-1617, conveyance of property at 3302-3326 East 92nd Street to neighbor space and allocation of financial assistance for development of Calumet Gateway Garden. Also, 2023-1618, conveyance of property at 3024-3240 West 5th Avenue to neighbor space and allocation of financial assistance for development of Eco Garden, North Garden. I move patches of these items by the first most favorable roll call of the Committee of Finance and associated unsuccessful motion.
Thank you, Chair, can you repeat that address on item number two again? Just make sure we had, we heard it right, it's in the record.
3024-3040 West 5th Avenue.
Thank you. Seeing no hands and hearing no objections to the Happy Committee, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair recognizes Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Chairman Mitchell.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way. On June 13th, 2023, an in-person meeting was held and the following ordinances passed by the majority of the members present. Pages two through six includes 45 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local Alderman from Wards 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 11, 13, 22, 23, 24, 25, 27, 29, 30, 32, 33, 35, 36, 38, 39, 44, 45, 47, 48, 49, and 50. Pages seven includes two transportation ordinances located in the 11th and 27th Wards. Page eight includes one subdivision ordinance located in the 3rd Ward. Page nine includes one vacation ordinance located in the 10th Ward and one dedication ordinance located in the 18th Ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered. Does that complete your report, Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, that completes my, concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair recognizes the Committee on Workforce Development. Chairman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for the Committee on Workforce Development, which met on Monday, June 12th. There was one item on the agenda, O2023-1591, an intergovernmental agreement with the Forest Preserve District of Cook County for land management services provided through Green Corps Chicago. The item passed unanimously amongst all members present. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. And finally, the Chair recognizes the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Chairman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, for rolling your R so nicely. Mr. President and members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for the People's Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on June 20th, 2023. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by majority of the members present. Page one contains document number A 2023-47, the appointment of Mayor Brandon Johnson as a member of the Public Buildings Commission. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call of the Finance Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Page one also contains a document number O 2023-2000, the historical landmark designation for Upworth Church located at 5253 North Kenmore Avenue in the 48th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection. Page one also contains the application for an administrative adjustment for Friendly Tavern LLC located at 6124 West Gunnison Street in the 45th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection. Pages one through 16 contain various map amendments in the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 11th, 15th, 16th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 24th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, 32nd, 34th, 36th, 37th, 40th, 41st, 42nd, 44th, 45th, 47th, 48th, and 49th Wards. Before I move passage, Alderman Vegas would like to speak to an item for Archie's Tavern at 2600 West Iowa in the 36th Ward.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chairman Rosa. Colleagues, this item is an item that I read in today's paper that looks like it's gonna be addressed around vintage signs. We have a sign here that had been around since the 1950s, 1960s, and unfortunately got caught up in bureaucracy. This establishment has been around for 80 years and will be celebrating their 80th year with a block party this weekend. But to, but to, but to their surprise, when they started the process of renewing their signs, to find out that they had to take their sign down and now they'll be putting it back up just in time for their 80th year just really sends the message that the City Council needs to do, hold the bureaucrats a little bit more accountable and making sure that the message is getting out that the city of Chicago is open for business. We need to make sure that we're assisting small businesses as easy as getting, as easy as an issue as getting a sign. So I just wanted to say, thank my colleagues for passing this. This is long overdue and again, we need to make sure that we're putting forward common sense when we're getting some of this legislation passed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman. Chairman Rosa.
Thank you. So I move passage on the previously listed items on pages one through 16 by the same motion if there is no objection. Okay, moving on, pages 16 through 17 contain various large signs over one...
You know, let's, let's do those. So seeing no hands, hearing no objections, since you, since you raised the, said the statement. So seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you so much. Moving on, pages 16 through 17 contain various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 2nd, 3rd, 8th, 10th, 11th, 27th, 28th, 32nd, 34th, 40th, 41st, and 42nd Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Seeing no hands, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Last but certainly not least, page one also contains the historical landmark designation for the Warehouse located at 206 South Jefferson Street in the 34th Ward. Before moving passage, I would like to take a moment to note that I'm so pleased that we are moving on this item during Pride Month. The Warehouse at 206 South Jefferson is where Black and Brown Chicagoans celebrating life and love, birthhouse music, a genre that has taken over the globe. The Warehouse is where Frankie Knuckles, a Grammy winner and proud openly gay black man, created a safe space for everyone. I commend Preservation Chicago and the Frankie Knuckles Foundation for their leadership on this issue. If no one else would like to speak on this item, I move passage by the same motion if there is no objection.
So no house heads? Okay, so no house heads wish to speak to this? So, hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Matters on the agreed upon calendar, I'm sorry, matters on the agreed calendar. Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, I've received from Clerk Anna M. Valencia a toll of 109 items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tributary resolutions from the following alderpersons. And Clerk Anna Valencia, so Clerk Anna Valencia, Alderperson Harris, Alderperson Quinn, Alderperson Ray Lopez, Alderperson Coleman, Alderperson Rodriguez, Alderperson Tabarez, Alderperson Irving, Alderperson Ramirez Rosa, Alderperson Metz, and Alderperson Hatton. I move the passage of the agreed calendar in the omnibus.
Thank you, hearing no objections, so ordered. New business. The Clerk will call the wards beginning with the first ward.
Zoning amendments referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic control regulations, traffic signals and traffic signs referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants of privilege on and over the public way which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, and exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Lasbada and others have opposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code titles 2, 8, and 11 regarding administration of private hauling complaints, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Almen Lasbada and Alderman, Almen Lasbada and Alderman Martin have opposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 2-4-120 regarding counting commissioners of family support services and public health towards maximum number of members, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Almen Robinson has proposed ordinance for dedication of the public alleys in the area bounded by East 48th Street, East 49th Street, South Cottage Grove Avenue, and South Evans Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Robinson and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code at Chapter 2-45 by modifying Section 2-45-155 requiring executed TIF redevelopment agreements to be made publicly available on department's website and adding a new Section 2-45-156 entitled Redevelopment Agreement and Approval Requirements for Certain Development Subsidies, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Almen Harris has proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as Officer Arena M. Preston Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Lee has proposed ordinance for vacation of public alleys in the area bounded by West 38th Street, South Halsted Street, South Lucetania Avenue, and West 38th Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Gutierrez has proposed ordinance for approval of plat of healthy Brighton subdivision bounded by West 47th Street, South California Avenue, South Richmond Street, and West 48th Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Lopez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code at Chapter 2-92 regarding MBE, WBE, advanced direct payments and definitions, which is referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Almen Lopez also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-64-350 prohibiting the sale of tobacco and liquor, liquid nicotine products flavored with menthol, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Lopez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 2-84-460 by allowing 12 weeks paid paternal leave for any member of police department, which is referred to Committee on Police and Fire. Almen Lopez and others also have a proposed resolution for reaffirmation of city's tribute to armed forces and call to not approve any TIF requests from Chicago Park District if any alteration, addition, or substitution to names of soldier field campus grounds or associated monuments, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Almen Lopez and others have proposed order to call for the Chicago Police Department and the Law Department to establish protocols for transparent certification process for you non-immigrant status and provide updates to Joint Committee on Public Safety and Immigrant and Refugee Rights, which is referred to Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Almen Lopez and others also have proposed resolution to call for hearings by the Committee on Public Safety and Immigration and Refugee Rights with Chicago Police and Law Departments regarding status of you non-immigration status certifications, policies, and approval slash denial and collection of data, which is referred to Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Almen Curtis has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Title 17 by modifying Sections 17-9-0200 and 17-0200 regarding prohibition, application, and definition of cluster mailboxes, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen, Almen Tabarez has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Mateo Zastro Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Tabarez also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 6084 South Archer Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Sichu Lopez has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-023 by allowing booting operations in the 25th Ward, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Fuentez has a proposed ordinance for approval of plat of res subdivision of Escoento Square bounded by West Cortlandt Street, West Bloomingdale Avenue, North Ridgeway Avenue, and Railroad Right of Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Burnett has proposed order for the issuance of permits, has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Conway has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 17-9-0129 regarding placement of adult-use cannabis dispensaries within 500 feet of any school and central business district. Which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Ramirez Rosa and others have a proposed resolution for recognition of Teamsters at UPS Fight for Fair Contract, which is referred to Committee of Workforce Development. Almen Conway and others have a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 2-92-955 regarding extension of veteran-owned small business, small local business participation goal pilot program until July 31st, 2026, which is referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Almen Vegas has a proposed resolution to call for hearings on the investment policies of city pension funds with respect to investments and development projects located in the city, which is referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Almen Vegas also has a proposed ordinance for support of a Class 6B tax incentive for the property at 2717 and 2757 West Chicago Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Almen Vegas also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of West Chicago Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Spazado has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Addison Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Vasquez has a proposed, Almen Vasquez has proposed resolution to call for the Illinois General Assembly to allow expanded opportunities for remote participation in hybrid committee meetings, which is referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Almen Vasquez also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on the city's response to the migrant crisis, which is referred to Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Almen Napolitano has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Jerry Hart Chicago Fire Department Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Napolitano also has a proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 11601 South Two-Eve, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Riley has a proposed ordinance for issuance of permits for signed signboards at 612 North Wall Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Knutson has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 9-80-095 by modifying restrictions on excessive standing of certain vehicles with engines running, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Almen Martin has a proposed ordinance for correction of the City Council Journal of Proceedings of March 15th, 2023, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Almen Martin also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Chapter 2-56 regarding qualifications and appointment of Inspector General and Public Safety Deputy, which is referred to Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Almen Martin and Almen Rodriguez have a proposed resolution to call for hearings by the Committee on Health and Human Relations regarding cities transgender, transgender hiring practices, status of software incorporating name and gender, availability of all gender restrooms, and assessment of complaints, complaint processing responses, and jurisdiction of EEOC, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Almen Martin and others have a proposed resolution to call for hearings on the Committee on Health and Human Relations on development and distribution of at-home-led testing kits for Chicagoans, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Almen Haddon has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 17-13-0103A regarding separate special use application fees for certain nonprofit and other applicant types, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Haddon also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of North Clark Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. of North Clark Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Silverstein and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code title nine by adding a new chapter nine dash one sixteen entitled Traffic Crash Review and Analysis, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Your Honor, that concludes the automatic introductions.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell, for the approval of the journal.
Mr. President, I'm not aware of any corrections to the journal from the May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three regular meeting, and move that it be approved.
Oh, okay. The Chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Uh, Mr. President, there was, there was a ordinance that was referred regarding veteran-based small businesses that was, that was attributed to me as a co-sponsor, is actually Alderman Viegas's bill as a, as one of three veterans on the council, all of whom are members of the Department of the Navy, even though my Marine Corps veterans may not care to admit that. I really want to thank Alderman Viegas for his, for his leadership on the issue and make sure that he gets the proper credit for the bill which was referred to budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much, your gentlemen. Thank you very much. So, no more objections, so ordered. Unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I'm aware of one piece of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Laspada and Alderman Lopez and calls for a vote on S O two zero two two dash three nine eight nine, which was deferred and published on April nineteen, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak to this item, I move passage of S O twenty twenty-two dash three nine eight nine, an amendment of municipal code chapters four dash eight and seventeen dash nine regarding licensing of urban farms and community gardens, and modifying section seven dash thirty-eight dash one four two concerning produce merchants, which was deferred and published at the April twenty, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council meeting by the first most favorable vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated motion to reconsider.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, good afternoon, members of the City Council. To refresh your memory, this was introduced before the end of the last term and was deferred and published by myself and others. Working with the new administration, we were able to preserve the ordinance that was originally passed out of committee because we are in discussions with addressing one of many of our concerns that we've seen throughout our neighborhoods, livestock. I know many of us, ever since twenty nineteen and beyond, have been trying to address and regulate this issue, and I look forward to working with the administration on that moving forward, but that is no reason for this ordinance not to proceed, which is why we are dealing with this today, and ask for your favorable support for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, for your cooperation and collaboration. So, hearing no objections, or does, or no other hands, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, are you aware of any other further unfinished business?
I am not aware of any other unfinished business.
Thank you. Miscellaneous business, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Except for the ordinance setting the date and time for the next meeting, I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Thank you. Do we have that? The date and time, we have that, the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time for the next meeting.
Thank you Clerk. Please read the ordinance, the ordinance.
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago. Section one, that the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at ten o'clock a.m. in the City Council Chamber on the second floor of City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell?
As I move passes in the omnibus.
All right, hearing no objection, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, I move that matters in the ordinance.
Okay, just, just a second, please. Before we move, the Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, I'd like to recognize and congratulate Mary Richardson Lowry for her first City Council meeting as the appointed corporate counsel. Ms. Lowry has served many years within the Law Department, she's a former buildings commissioner, and I believe she would be, when confirmed, be the first African-American woman to serve in such capacity. Congratulations to you, Ms. Lowry, and we look forward to your confirmation in July.
Thank you very much. I don't think it's premature to clap, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Gardner, or the AKAs are really showing out today, aren't they? One more dynamic, Alderman Mitchell, the Chair recognizes Alderperson Fuentez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to invite everybody to a lunch that we're having immediately after council on the fourth floor in recognition of our Puerto Rican staffers across the city and Puerto Rican elected officials hosted by the Latino Caucus.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I saw Alderman Moore leave several times, I hope there's food still up there. For the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move that matters in the omnibus, be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Finally, Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered, the meeting is adjourned.